Good evening.
Good evening.
Wow, I like that. We've got a lot to celebrate tonight, don't we? Welcome to the Village Board Meeting of October 21st, 2025. We'll start off by being led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our Village Clerk, Manal Desai. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order, and I now ask that our Village Clerk, Manal Desai, please call the roll. Trustee Pierce Lowen.
Aye.
Trustee Schecter.
Here.
Trustee Kimani Levy.
Here.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Lissa Levy.
Here.
Mayor Tannis. Here, and we have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to have removed from the Consent Agenda? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve. Trustee Lissa Levy, is there a second? Trustee Allison Pierce Lowen, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Kimani Levy.
Aye.
Trustee Robinson.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy.
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen.
Aye.
Trustee Schecter.
Aye.
The motion passes. We now have a proclamation. We are recognizing October 24th as Polio Eradication Awareness Day, and with us tonight is former retired Village Manager Al Rigoni. Al, you might stay seated for just a moment because Trustee Lissa Levy is going to read the proclamation that I will pass to her, and then we'll meet you up there for photos, and I know you wanted to make a couple comments. Trustee Levy.
Whereas Rotary is a global network of 1.2 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, are we, oh, yep, sorry. Whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, the Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than $2.9 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting more than 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Gates Foundation. And whereas the efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $11 billion to the effort. And whereas continued political and financial commitment is essential to overcome the final hurdles, strengthen health systems, and ensure that no child anywhere suffers from polio ever again. And whereas World Polio Day, observed on October 24th, serves as a moment to honor the progress made, recognize the dedication of health workers and volunteers, and renew our collective resolve to finish the job. And whereas there are over 10,000 Rotary members in more than 300 clubs throughout Illinois that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Now, therefore, Ann Tannis, Mayor of the Village of Skokie, does hereby declare October 24th, 2025, as Rotary Club of Skokie Valley Polio Eradication Awareness Day.
Thank you, and I'd like to point out that I asked Trustee Levy to read this proclamation because she is the trustee liaison to our Board of Health. Mr. Rigoni?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, Village staff. I appreciate the opportunity to take about a minute, minute and a half, just to thank everybody and to amplify on the resolution a bit. First of all, I am not the president of the local Rotary Club. That is Peg Tolleson, and most people don't know this, but the Skokie Valley Rotary Club is actually consisting of the four communities of Skokie, Lincolnwood, Morton Grove, and Niles. We have businesspeople as well as individuals from all four of those communities. So when Skokie moved its meeting to tonight from Monday, Peggy is literally at the Lincolnwood Board Meeting tonight doing the same thing with this resolution, so she sends her regards. I wanted to just give some quick facts that were not in the resolution. 1988, when this endeavor began, there were 1,000 cases per day, predominantly of children being struck with polio. 2014, I'm jumping a lot of the years, but 2014, the country of India is declared polio-free. 2024, the entire continent of Africa is declared polio-free. So this is money well spent and a very, very successful program by international Rotary, as well as the Gates Foundation and a bunch of other folks. Polio is endemic in only two remaining countries in the entire world, and that is Afghanistan and Pakistan. And we all know about some of the warring situations in those two countries, and yet Rotary is still attempting to vaccinate children in those two countries. I'll just close by saying one of the reasons I love Rotary is not only for its worldwide efforts, such as polio eradication, but they allow all of the local clubs to pick their own initiatives in terms of what that club views as necessary in its domain, if you will, in its local communities. I'm proud to just indicate two of those. Right now, this month, the month of October, and there are boxes throughout the community, there is a coat drive. The Rotary Club is coordinating with the Rest Bite Center in terms of collecting those coats and distributing those coats to people in need. The Rest Bite Center is just a block south of Village Hall. And secondly, seems like we're a long way from summer in the backlot bash, but the Rotary Club, the key fundraiser is the morning pancake breakfast, and 100% of those proceeds go to 15, up to 15, of the nonprofit organizations that serve the community. A couple that you might know of is Orchard Village, Turning Point for Mental Health Services, and the Skokie Community Foundation, of which our mayor was recently a member. And so those are just three of the up to 15 community organizations that we give grants through. So with that, I'll just close with a little sales pitch. Anybody who is interested in joining our club or open the businesses, as well as members, and I've left some brochures in the back of the room, and I thank the board again for your consideration and patience this evening. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. Mayor, do you need this back, or is this ours?
That's yours.
Okay, thank you.
Tonight, we have two fire department employees being sworn in. I would like to now call on Helene Levine, Vice Chair of the Board of Fire and Police Commission, to swear in our new firefighters.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Tannis, Village Trustees, Fire Chief Eschner, and all who are here on this very special evening. I would like to especially acknowledge the family and friends of tonight's appointees. This is a proud moment for all of you. I extend my congratulations to you and thank you for supporting your loved one during their journey leading to this very moment. Tonight, we will swear in two newly appointed firefighters. We must never forget that the men and women who serve as first responders deserve our admiration. They are often the first on the scene of a tragedy and provide security and comfort to those who are suffering. We invest our first responders with authority to promote and to keep the peace. They have earned our respect, our support, and our gratitude, and it is my great honor to be part of this very special ceremony. Let us begin the swearing in. I would like to call up Jack King. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye, Jack King.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The State of Illinois.
The State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations of the Fire Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Fire Department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a firefighter.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a firefighter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, your certificate of appointment. I need you to do, to write, I need a signature on a certificate that I will give to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Firefighter King, firefighter King, would you kindly, what I'd like you to do now is to introduce your family and friends who are here.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you go to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Wait, that's swage position.
Yes, ma'am. So I got my dad right here, John King, great, the best guy. I got my girlfriend right here, Ashley. She's the best, obviously. And then my mom. Yeah, Ashley the best. And then my grandma, she made it out here. What it do without them, you're the best. I love them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to your family as well.
Thank you.
I would now like to call up Michael McFarland. Michael, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye, Michael McFarland.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The State of Illinois.
The State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations of the Fire Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Fire Department.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a firefighter.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a firefighter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Firefighter McFarland, would you also please introduce any of your guests?
I'm just going to ask you a quick signature.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Okay, I guess now it's official. Firefighter McFarland.
I think it'd be easier if they all just stand up. A lot of them took their time to come out of the South Side of Chicago, so. I'll be quick, I'll start with my dad. He's a Chicago Ridge retired firefighter, my mom next to him, my girlfriend's parents, my girlfriend in the middle. Behind them is my cousin Chris, his girlfriend, and my Aunt Anne, and Patrick. Over here, I have my Uncle Brian and my Aunt Debbie. Behind them, I have my cousin Kate, my Aunt Mary Ann, my Uncle Rick, my dad's best friend Bird, and then my Aunt Anne, and they moved, but I saw them over there earlier. And then I also, I also had the privilege of having my old fire chief, as well as one of my professors from Western Illinois, and two Western Illinois students come from Tacoma, Illinois, so. Thank you very much.
Congratulations to both of you. Thank you for your service. You're joining one of the premier departments in the state of Illinois and the entire United States, and we look forward to watching the progression of your career in Skokie. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the presentation of our Beautification and Improvement Commission Awards, Beautification Awards. I want to just say if any of the guests, if you would like to go ahead and leave, you're welcome to do that. This is going to take
to take us a few minutes. I'm not going to take a formal recess now. That will come after the award presentation. But we understand if you want to go and congratulate your While the room is clearing, I'd like to just take a quick moment and introduce Bob Quain, who is the chairperson of the Beautification and Improvement Commission. And Bob, I assume that you will introduce, or at least ask to stand, members of the commission.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And Deborah Stinson, I'm going to ask you to close the door, please. Thank you. Thank you, Johanna.
Good evening, everyone. So it's that time of the year when the village and the Beautification Improvement Commission come together and recognize and thank property owners who've gone above and beyond to beautify their homes and businesses. This year was truly a banner one, with 90 property submissions and 31 winners. So our collective congratulations go out to all the residents nominated for recognition tonight. To our winners and to every participant, your efforts to enhance and beautify your property are exemplary and serve as an inspiration to all that call Skokie home. I also want to express my sincere thanks to the people who made this evening possible, the members of our commission, and our dedicated village staff, the organization and leadership of our staff liaison and village forester Kathy Stevens, along with her intern Kaylee Alexic, and the coordination of judging by Commissioner George Hachek, were integral to the success of this much-loved program. And a big thank you as well to our commission members, who scouted and nominated properties from corner to corner in Skokie. And a special shout out to a handful of commissioners who took on the tough job of judging and scoring the impressive properties. Many of our commission members and staff are here tonight. Please stand and be recognized, and I want to thank you for your hard work and commitment.[774.38][774.38][applause] At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner Valerie Schuman to share a brief update on the upcoming initiatives by the commission. Afterward, we'll enjoy a brief video vignette showcasing this year's winning properties, and then Vice Chair Mitchell Sandler will announce the winners. Award recipients will be invited to come forward to receive the recognition and have a photo taken with the mayor. And we'll conclude the evening by inviting all award winners and their guests to join us for a brief reception in the event room just down this hallway. So Valerie?
All right, thank you all. Keep this brief because we really want to get on to the exciting part of giving out the awards. Just a couple of quick items. First thing, wanted to recognize, the commission has been hard at work bringing more butterflies to downtown. Some of you may have noticed that there's a whole new native planting area at Bab and Louise, near the Ace Hardware on Oakden. That's the second one that we put in. The first one was last year at Main Nile Center in Lincoln. So if you want to see what it looks like after a year of the natives being in, go check it out over there. And speaking of thank yous, I wanted to say a huge thank you to Katie and Mike, who were the real engines behind this on the commission, as well as Kathy and the Skokie Parks team, who came out and really helped us make it happen, and of course, all the commissioners who got their hands dirty and actually did the planting. So thank you to everyone for that. Another quick thing, we mentioned putting together a Skokie Garden Walk last year. 2025 turned out to be a research year. We went and saw other people's garden walks. We did a little brainstorming. But next year, we should be ready to go live. So look out for updates on that. And in the meantime, please do have a wander around all the other award-winning gardens. You've got the addresses. They're on the website. Take a look. We also have, for the folks who've been doing the gardening, we've got a list of all the pollinator gardens that are on a map, too. So we're showing that off. We're keeping track of that as well. We will get that posted shortly. So those were the two big updates. Also want to give a quick shout out for those who were able to join us at the library. Just last week, there was a talk that Rachel organized. I don't know where Rachel is, but yay, Rachel, thank you, on putting your gardens to bed for the season in a way that keeps them happy, healthy, and all the pollinators and other creatures that live there are also happy and healthy. So thanks to everyone who attended that. If you didn't get a chance, they'll be posting the video. It is posted. All right. So if you go to the library website, you can take a look at that and get a little more information, maybe. Last, but very important, because I only have two minutes, we need to say an enormous thank you to our outgoing Chair Bob, who went and told us that he's resigning. So Bob, can you hear for a second? Bob hasn't just sat and chaired meetings. He's been hands-on, involved in pretty much everything we've accomplished over the last bunch of years here, up to and including bringing the coffee to events. So we are presenting him with a handsome travel coffee mug, complete with our smiling faces, and the new logo for the awards that many of you have on your yard signs, which was, of course, created under his tenure. So thank you so much, Bob.[1008.63][1008.63][applause]
It'll be the best coffee ever. And by the way, the handouts that Valerie was referring to, they'll be in the event room, like the maps of the properties they've won in the Mitchell, if you could step forward and announce our winners. And we'll be starting with the top five properties, a new category with the Beautification Commission called Skokie Best. And then Mayor, if you could come down for photographs.
As I call your names, please come forward. If you came in late and I didn't catch you, at the end, please raise your hand and let us know. We'll start with Amy Shure, 8516 Springfield Avenue.[1311.01][1311.01][applause] So one of the top five. Justin Newberry and Kim Bama.[1352.23][1352.23][applause] That was the only one of the top fivers here. Got a whole bunch in the row now. Abby Coley.
Coley.
Connie Cook.
Yay![1454.66][1454.66][applause]
She's wearing her own shoes. It's like she wears it.
There she is.
Takes me a world of time.
Take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege. The bouquet of flowers was just handed to Ms. Cook by the owner of one of our wonderful small businesses in Skokie, Julie from Skokie Flowers. Julie, thank you for your kindness.[1541.51][1541.51][applause]
Anne Herren. Herren, H-E-R-R-E-N.
Nancy Bellburger and Viviana Ramirez.
George and Brett Schleuder.
Jane and David Shapiro.
Jane and David Shapiro. Doug and Sharon Steckel. Are there any winners who came in after I came into the room that I missed that did not get checked in? This represents only about half of our winners. Thank you very much. Recession.
Now we will take a five-minute recess. We will reconvene at 8:12.
Please join us for the winners for reception down this hallway, through this door here. And we have some giveaways we'd love to give you tonight as well. So right down this hallway for a brief reception. Thank you, everybody.
We are ready to reconvene. I could trouble those in the back to kindly take a seat. And I'll ask someone nearby to close the door. Thank you. Thank you to Deborah Stinson for taking care of that. So, the next item on the agenda is public comment. And I'll provide some more details on that in a moment. But I'd like to address two issues briefly. Over the last week, the village has received comments and emails regarding the activities of ICE agents in and around the village of Skokie and surrounding communities. Currently, Section 58A of the Skokie Village Code prohibits the village from, quote, "assisting with immigration enforcement by aiding or complying with immigration detainers, administrative warrants, or custody transfers, or providing access to village facilities for investigative or enforcement purposes without a criminal warrant," end quote. I know there are many opinions as to what actions the village might preemptively take in response to these actions. I believe that this issue is best addressed as an item for discussion on the November 3 Village Board meeting agenda. It will be noticed and on that agenda, and we will take public comment that evening as well. I appreciate the care and concern expressed by community members regarding this difficult matter. Secondly, I would also like to briefly address an incident that occurred in our community on October 7 involving multiple youth, one, and this occurred in one of our parks. The Skokie Police responded and have interviewed a multitude of individuals who either witnessed or were involved in the incident. The police continue to work to bring this matter to a resolution. Again, I appreciate the care and concern expressed by community members regarding this difficult matter. With those things said, I would remind those present about the structure of our public comments. We have up to 30 minutes now for public comment. Each speaker is allocated precisely three minutes. Please note that this is an opportunity for us to listen to you, and thus, we will not respond. And we'd ask you to give your name, your full name. And you don't have to give your address, but we would like to know if you actually, if you live in Skokie. We would appreciate that. Sir?
Back in the camp, please. Thank you very much. Good evening. David Dalca, 9330 Laurel. What you have before me on the screen here is a letter dated June 3, not last week, but June 3, of items that I addressed to you, Madam Mayor. We need all the items on this list addressed by you. It's a far more serious crisis than a federal issue that the villages of Skokie has no jurisdiction over. The issues in this letter include issues with IDOT, with trees and rotted roots. The Old Orchard Road, Eden's Ramp, has now been closed for over 18 months with no answer in sight, which is causing reckless driving on our side street, which the Skokie Police continue to do nothing about despite several reports from numerous neighbors, not only myself but others. Public Works, we still need a four-way stop sign at Laurel and Emerson. Garbage cans in the neighborhood due to rats have still not been fixed. It's been requested that I give you a list of the addresses. I can't give you a list of the addresses because many of the houses don't have proper house numbers on the back, which according to the Skokie Property Standards Board, all houses are supposed to have numbers on the back in the alley for emergency response. That needs to be taken care of. I need somebody from Public Works to come out there, just bring a truck with cans and just get rid of the ones that have holes in them, put new ones there, it wouldn't be that hard. There are several other issues there with that. With fire, my father still needs to be taken to Lutheran General Hospital at the request of Mr. Robinson and Mr. Iverson. I provided a note to you in July, and I still haven't had a meeting with the new fire chief. I still haven't had a meeting with you about this. It's a very serious issue. It's a life-threatening issue. I'm just waiting for my father to die so we can sue you, because that's what we'll do. My mother's DNR has been sent to the proper contact person with no response, because he's non-responsive, because he's not professional. There are numerous violations of the police and the corruption of the police in this village, which I want to continue to show on the screen. And I won't even read them all. Your investigations had us a complete buffoon. And, you know, these other things continue to happen. We don't have a dementia tracking program as most villages in the world do. These other things here. I'm going to give this letter to the village clerk upon the end of my comments. Mr. Robinson, you promised me a meeting three months ago to follow up on these issues. I haven't had it yet. Mr. Iverson, you've made great efforts, but these people aren't doing their jobs. I need your help to get all six trustees to be involved the way that you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Polka. I'm a Skokie resident. Today was a devastating day in our area, which had me completely rewrite my public comment for this evening based on a personal experience. I went to PetSmart this morning, just over the Skokie border on Oakton in Evanston, a few minutes before they opened. I saw a landscaping truck on the side, unattended. That always makes me nervous these days. So I parked near the truck, hoping to see workers somewhere. Instead, here is what I saw on my way, as I made my way to the truck. In the far corner of the parking lot, agents lying in wait for their next abduction. It's hard to see in this photo, but believe me, I saw their masked faces. And a patch on an arm pressed up against the driver's side window. I took photos, making sure they could see me. I cannot stop them from ripping hard-working people from our community, tearing families apart, but I wanted to be sure I was there as a witness. Five minutes later, they pulled out. I pulled out too. I followed. Should I blow my whistle? Honk my horn? Will people know? East down Oakton to Dodge, then south on Dodge, past an elementary school where one morning less than a week ago, someone has abducted a block away as children were being taken to school. And that's where they stopped. You're with me? And this happened.
Jail and then you, violation of 18 U.S.C. 111. If you continue to do it, I'll place you on the rest.
Can you show me the ordinance? I'm going to keep.
Unless you would take you to jail, and then your lawyer can see it after the fact.
Okay, it's my understanding, I have the right to report you.
You're not having to impede a federal item of property.
I'm not impeding you.
Violating traffic codes while following a federal vehicle.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't violate, I didn't violate.
I think you get the idea, and I don't want to run my time, but you can see there's somebody on the other side of my car too. Home Depot threatens to tow the cars of people trying to protect our community members, but allows their own customers to be hunted by these kidnappers. There's a post circulating on Facebook of a man being tackled and detained in their store in Evanston today by several armed men, including the two in that video, who tried to intimidate me. My heart is broken. Skokie, don't be like Home Depot. Silence is complicity. Do not give these kidnappers places to lay in wait, hiding in the shadows of village-owned property, just waiting to abduct a hard-working member of our community from a bus stop as they head to work, a mother on their way to the grocery store, or even outside a village hall after paying a water bill. Please make it crystal clear that ICE is not permitted to use our village property in their campaign of cruelty and terror. And closing, while I wish I could say this in all 90 languages spoken in Skokie, for now I'll speak to my neighbors who are being targeted most. Oste, no estas solo, you are not alone. November 3 is too long. Will County has done it, Evanston has done it, Chicago, Cook County, Lake County, we are behind the wall.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and members of the village leadership. Thank you for giving me this moment. On behalf of the Chicago Jewish Alliance and Jewish Community. My name is Susan Haggard.
Thank you.
I am not a resident of Skokie. I did grow up here for 30 years, and I worked here for 15 years, and I am still proud of the Jewish, the Skokie community. I speak tonight because what happened in Shawnee Park is not normal. It marks a dangerous turning point for our town. On October 7, a group of visibly Jewish children were walking in a familiar park when they were surrounded by a mob. They were shouted at, asked if they were Jewish, called baby killers. They were told, "We're going to kill you." They were chased, shot at with gel and pellet guns, threatened with a real gun, and they fled in terror. Their parents arrived to find them crying and shaken. A police report was filed. This was not rowdiness or a prank. It was a targeted anti-Semitic attack on minors because they were Jewish. Skokie is not just another suburb. It's a symbol. Survivors of the Holocaust rebuilt here. Never again was our vow. And now Jewish children have been hunted in daylight in a Skokie park. We are shaken and we ask, how safe are Jewish children in this town? How safe is any child when hate walks freely in daylight? Here is what we are asking of you tonight. Number one, acknowledgement. Publicly condemn this incident as an anti-Semitic hate crime, not as an event or youth conflict. Number two, transparency. Provide an updated timeline when results will be released and how police are supporting the victims and families. Number three, prevention. Increase park patrols, coordinate safety with schools and synagogues, and create a safe channel for families to report hate incidents. Number four, education. Partner with Jewish and other minority groups for programs on anti-Semitism, hate speech, and bystander intervention. Solidarity is number five. Reaffirm that Jewish families are part of Skokie's fabric, and that hate has no home here includes Jews too. Let me say it plainly. Living as a Jewish person in America today is not what it once was. We hear the chants, the threats, the messaging. We have watched the media misdescribe events, watched academia and neighborhoods wrestle with it. We have friends and children who no longer feel safe simply because they wear a kippah, because they attend a meal at a synagogue, because they are visibly Jewish.
And I do apologize, we are firm on our three minutes. Would you be kind enough to send your remarks? You can either email them to info@skokie.org, or send them to our village manager, John Lockerby. Thank you.
We are asking for your support.
Thank you. We'd appreciate that detailed information, just as you said it. Anna.
Hello. Oops. I have very little to add. I didn't know Susan, and I did not know what she was going to talk about, but I'm on the same subject. My name is Anna Lapsen. I've been a Skokie resident since 1985. I'm mostly my kid's mom, lately a grandparent, a former PTA chair and a member, and a small business owner, and a bookstore employee. So I was always involved in the community until a few years ago. All that I was involved is fundraising, a bake sale, a charity dinner planning. October 7 changed everything, and a lot of us became community activists. And we found ourselves in a world that's so upside-down that people who strangled an eight-month-old baby to death simply because he was Jewish still seen in the world as victims. I think everybody's gone, lost their mind. So what happened in Shawnee Park is unconscionable. It's hard to believe that it's happening in our own backyard, not in Kishinov in 1900s, not in Berlin in 1930s. A mob chasing Jewish children. I was that girl once. I grew up in Moscow, where children sometimes would point out to me and say, "You're not one of ours." Just because my mother's name was Esther, my father's name was Shimsin, that's not Slavic names. And I had a dream that one day I will live in a country where it's never going to happen. And I had a dream that one day I will live in a country where it's never going to happen to my children, let alone to my grandchildren, who are visibly Jewish. And they go to schools that are like as if you're entering Fort Knox. So I don't think we need to like spend, which we spend our own money, Jewish money, to arm Jewish schools. Do we have to do it for public parks now so children, Jewish children, can feel safe? And Susan very eloquently pointed out the list of, you know, expectations and whatever. And I actually want to finish what I'm saying with a quote by Pastor Bonhoeffer, "That silence in the face of evil is evil itself. God will not hold us guiltless. Not to speak is to speak; not to act is to act." And just this last week, when we were attending services in the synagogue, they, we read psalms at the end of the service, and the psalm of that week, believe it or not, was Psalm number one twenty-six, which said, "The Song of Exodus. When the Lord will return the exiles of Zion, we will have been like dreamers. Then our mouth will be filled with laughter, and our tongue with songs of joy, and they will say among the nations, 'Lord has been, has done great things for us,'" which we did because we witnessed our pastages being...
Anna, I'm so sorry. Your time is up. We are firm about our three minutes. Forgive me. Thank you, Anna.
My name is Brad Omen. I live two houses down from the site of the water main break in February. I want to start by thanking trustee Pierre Slovan. For those of you who don't know, trustee Pierre Slovan has been absent from chambers for six board meetings since April. That's about a fifty percent attendance record, so I think we should thank her for taking the time to actually show up tonight. Trustee Pierre Slovan's absences are indicative of a village hall that does not want to do its job. If trustees can't be trusted to show up and exert oversight on unelected bureaucrats like Mr.'s Lockerbie, Wyatt, and Slankard, then it is no surprise that those men would feel emboldened to do less of their job. For instance, on February thirteenth, Mr. Slankard and the public works boys he's so proud of didn't want to stand in the cold finding a leak, so they went home and left us with a flood. On February fourteenth, Mr. Lockerbie didn't do his job, first by neglecting water infrastructure for ten years, and then by failing to respond transparently to the emergency his neglect created. He then allowed Mr. Slankard to tell the press that the water main break was unrelated to the leak the night before, despite saying previously, "We didn't know enough to speculate on the cause." Mr. Slankard has still not apologized to the public for that mischaracterization based on his own hope rather than facts. In the months since, Mr. Lockerbie has refused to hold anyone accountable. Instead, he has spent countless taxpayer dollars searching for an inanimate object to blame for the human failures of village hall. So tonight I am here to ask the rest of the board to buck this trend and do your jobs. Stop letting unelected bureaucrats take our tax dollars while making our communities less secure. Stop letting men who make hundreds of thousands of dollars tell us to stop complaining when they saddle us with debt. And stop expecting residents to be wealthy enough to absorb the costs of Lockerbie and Slankard's failures. This board has earned its reputation as an opaque, self-perpetuating political cartel. There seems to be no way to recall you. All we can do is ask again, do your jobs. Hold Mr. Slankard accountable. Hold Mr. Wyatt accountable. Hold Mr. Lockerbie, most of all, accountable. His long tenure in this building has created an ethos that is no longer trustworthy. And if you want citizens to trust this building, you're going to need to get bad actors out of village hall. And finally, I ask that you hold each other accountable, because right now trustee Pierre Slovan is making it look like none of you take representative democracy seriously.
So I want to, before you start, you will be our sixth speaker. We have allocated time for up to ten, so you're six, seven, eight, nine. Mr. Shah, you'll be number ten. There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for open public comment. So just to be clear, Mr. Shah is our last speaker for this round.
Can I make the note to the clerk?
Yes, you're welcome to do that, sir.
I like hanging out with you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Shah. Please.
Thank you. I'd like to, my name is Maya Crystal, and I'm a Skokie resident, and I'm concerned about ICE activity in Skokie and surrounding neighborhoods. And I'd like to urge the board to take action immediately to prevent ICE use of village property and parking lots, particularly parking lots, vacant lots for ICE use, as mentioned by speakers before me. I think waiting until November is too late. There's been, there's already been multiple abductions of residents in neighboring Evanston, and ICE was verified in Skokie this past Sunday near the Home Depot parking lot on Dempster near Brunch Cafe. I don't want to wait for members of our community to be taken by ICE. I'd urge the board to look at all options as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, we don't have a Home Depot or Brunch Cafe in Skokie. I think you may be thinking of our neighbor to the west, the village of Niles. I just wanted to get the record straight on that. Thank you, though.
Good evening. My name is Marcy Shaheenolu. I'm a Skokie resident. I live in the Fairview neighborhood, and I'm also here to discuss my deep concern about ICE activity in our village. I'm here as both a mother and as an attorney. As an attorney, I worked for ten years in criminal defense in state and federal court, and then also for three years at the Illinois Attorney General's Office doing civil rights litigation, defending Illinois State Police against allegations of civil rights violations, including unlawful arrest, unlawful seizure. So I could tell you anything you want to know about the Fourth Amendment, and I can tell you that the activity that ICE has been involved with is absolutely unconstitutional and unconscionable. But it doesn't take a constitutional scholar to know what they're doing is wrong. As a mother, I can watch the news, I can read the newspaper, and I can see that there's people out there wearing ICE uniforms who are targeting our fellow human beings, and they're not being treated as such. And that is a travesty. And I can tell you that I have never, I've lived in Skokie since 2012, and this is the first time that I've come to a village board meeting. And I'm spurred in part by the abduction of my neighbor from the Fairview neighborhood this past Friday. He's a father of two children who go to my children's school, who was abducted from the Menards in Morton Grove. And he's currently, you know, in detention at the Broadview Processing Center, which is not a detention center, you know, subjected to a situation where he doesn't have room to lay down. He will then be transported to El Paso, Texas, because they are literally running out of space for all the people that they are rounding up. So we have to, we have to feel our humanity, and we have to act. We know that this is wrong, and we cannot allow our village's public spaces to be used to facilitate terrorism by these federal agents. So I urge you to take some action, the way that Cook County has, the way that Chicago has, the way that Evanston has, the way that Will County has, to pass an executive order, a measure, a resolution, whatever you want to call it, to take a stand on behalf of our citizens and our residents and our fellow human beings. Thank you.
Again, before we proceed, just a point of order. Sir, the gentleman who's last in line, unfortunately, the gentleman in front of you will be our last speaker.
I wanted to take his place, but...
Well, no, the gentleman in front of you is the last speaker.
Okay. Just wait later?
Yes, there will be thirty minutes, up to thirty minutes allocated at the end of our meeting. So thank you for your understanding. Ms.?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for having all of us and for hearing public comment. Sounds like you guys have a lot of work going on. My name is Christina Fleck, and I have been extremely, extremely proud to live in and raise my family here in Skokie. Thank you, Mr. Iverson, for your response to my email. I also appreciated knowing there's a real person on the other end. I'm here also to ask that you immediately take action to pass a measure of any kind to prevent immigration enforcement and activities in our village-owned properties, our parking lots, our playgrounds, the library that we love to visit, and other public and shared spaces. On the village website, you are brave enough to write that Skokie values inclusion, dignity, and respect for all, that we're committed to providing safe access to village services and protecting the rights of everyone who lives here. And I say that you're brave enough to write that, because when you write it, you have to lead it. You're accountable. If that's truly our vision, then we must be intentional about shaping a community that looks, sounds, and feels like that vision. This measure isn't just about policy, as people have spoken, it's about people, and we're all people, right? I am deeply concerned for the emotional and physical safety of my immigrant neighbors, but I'm also thinking very selfishly about my own family. I should not have to hesitate before asking my children's seventy-year-old Mexican grandparents to take them to the library, or around the corner to the park, or on an errand, because I worry about them being stopped, questioned, or even worse, detained, simply based on the color of their skin. That is not the definition of safe access to our services. Doesn't matter what you think about politics. That is not the definition. Skokie's history reminds us who we are. This is a community who has a history of stepping up to protect and fight for its people. Think back to 1977. I was not born yet, for the record. That's a long time ago, no offense. But it's there, right? All you have to do is take a look back. And in that time, the argument was that the mere presence of neo-Nazis in the neighborhood was enough to cause psychological harm. And I know it's not the same at all, but I would argue that the presence of masked immigration and armed immigration enforcements in our spaces carries a similar weight of fear and harm. It's unacceptable.
Thank you.
Please lead with compassion.
Your time is up. Thank you, though.
Hi, everyone. If I'm speaking at the wrong time, let me know. My name is Ellen Weber. I come here as a resident and as a retired community development director, so I have a background in planning. I've met Mr. Lockerbie before. I am very concerned over the forty-six-hundred main project, and I want to point out a few things, but I will be writing you all a letter. But first, I want to thank you for the strategic plan. My mother and I attended the meeting. It was very well done, very well attended, and there were trends at our table, which had five families represented, four of whom were concerned over density, one over sidewalks, and all of whom said, "You're not listening to us." So I came here to alert you that I'm going to be sending you a letter, and I hope you will listen to me. My concern over this project is the design. It is more than density. It is the design and variance from the subdivision. These buildings do not have alleys behind them or public right-of-way streets to handle the parking, and we are in an area with subpar right-aways. And the, I felt that the application was incomplete. I've submitted a FOIA. I do not have the response yet. But we're doing a disservice to the future residents, and we are going to be negatively impacting the existing residents, some of whom in the townhomes spoke at Plan Commission. Shirley said, "I sometimes walk two blocks to park already. What's going to happen to me?" I'm concerned about the underground vaults and previous pavers and the fire trucks crossing over those and the narrow east-west streets, and how the fire truck apparatus will have room to set up to service a fire. I'm concerned that the engineering is not yet done. I'm concerned that MWRD considers green engineering. It's seventy-five percent impervious, yet it said fifty percent. It's that kind of detail that has caught my attention. So you're, I understand the goal of starting an affordable housing plan. I worked for the city of St. Charles, which was one of the first two in the region to do an inclusive housing ordinance. I understand the concept, but you are sacrificing one neighborhood to build that plan if it goes forward, designed as is, and I'm asking you to reconsider some of the design. And I will make one comment on dumpsters. A friend of mine just sold her place in Madison Place. Sixty units, four full dumpsters of trash, two full dumpsters of recycling, twice-a-week pickup. We're looking at two dumpsters here. I think that there are some redesign concerns that should be considered. Thanks for listening.
Good evening, members of the village board. My name is Said Ahmed, and I'm here tonight as a concerned resident who cares deeply about the safety, trust, and dignity of everyone who calls Skokie home. I'm asking the board to take a clear and principled stand to ensure that Immigration and Customs Enforcement ICE agents are not permitted to use Skokie public properties, such as our municipal buildings, libraries, schools, and community centers, to conduct arrests or raids. Allowing ICE to operate on village property sends us a message of fear to immigrant families who live, work, and contribute to our community every day. It undermines the trust that residents place in our local government and our police, and it makes people less likely to report crimes, seek help, or participate in civic life. Skokie has a long tradition of inclusion and respect for human rights. Protecting our residents from unnecessary federal immigration enforcement actions on village grounds is consistent with those values, is inconsistent with those values. It's about maintaining a welcoming, safe, and united community for all. And I want to emphasize, waiting until November third for the next village board meeting is simply too long to delay this discussion. The fear and harm caused by ICE actions are not hypothetical. They are happening now. Our community deserves clarity and protection now, not weeks from now. I urge you to adopt a clear policy affirming that Skokie's public resources and spaces will never be used to assist or facilitate ICE enforcement actions. Let's make sure that everyone in Skokie, no matter where they were born, knows that they belong here. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our community.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may just make a comment.
Sure.
I do want to reiterate what the mayor said previous to the public comment. In March of this year, the village board did amend our Skokie village code, and we amended it in the Human Relations section, codifying the Safety Act and prohibiting the village from assisting with immigration enforcement by aiding or complying with immigration detainers, administrative warrants, or custody transfers, or providing access to village facilities for investigative or enforcement purposes without a criminal warrant. And this applies to village facilities, which the village has the jurisdiction over. The village doesn't necessarily have jurisdiction to use this section of the village code for Skokie parks, Skokie schools, library. So I just want to make that clear. There are separate jurisdictions in this town as well, but we did this in March of this year.
Thank you. Nevertheless, we will discuss this matter on November third. The next item on our agenda is a presentation of our strategic plan, community engagement data, by President and CEO of CP2 Consulting, Corey Porusplatch.
Thank you so much for having me back. We have done a lot of work since I was here to see all of you earlier. There we go. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and present the results. One of the things I want you to know is I am not going to read all of the data on these slides, or we would be here all night. I don't think anybody wants that. So I have compiled all this so that you can go through and review it later. What I want to do is I want to provide an analysis as we go through, some of the things that I would draw your attention to, some of the things that I see that is either, that is noteworthy to me. So I really think of this more as an analysis, but I hope that you will take this and you will look at it later and really kind of digest all of the data. So I want to talk through the ways that we have collected data. So we went through, we did internal stakeholder data, we did community survey data, we did focus groups, we did twelve of them, which is actually double the normal, the amount I normally do. And then we did, and those included longtime residents, English-language... And then we did, and those included longtime residents, English language learners, nonprofits, faith organizations, businesses, new residents, cultural groups, families with children, high school students, community partners, and seniors in the community. So we really did hear from a lot of different perspectives in that. And then a community visioning session that was held on October 5th. So let's talk about the community visioning session real quick. So we collected data there in three different ways. We had table discussions with Skokie's SCAF as facilitators, having conversations around three key questions. We had writable table coverings, because we knew that there were some people who were coming there wanting to talk about current issues, priorities, maybe things that they felt were going on right now. We wanted to give them the opportunity to be able to share that, but we also wanted to be able to talk about the future. So those writable table coverings were for them to be able to note those things while still being able to participate in that conversation about the future. And then post-it notes. The post-it notes were them to be able to record their individual perspectives and for us to be able to hear from each individual involved. And that was about their individual priorities for the Skokie of the future. So the questions, these are the actual slides that I used, were things like, "What do you like best about Skokie? What makes Skokie the place that you love? Why would you tell somebody to move here?" And this was actually, we used a thing called Mentimeter. Mentimeter allows us to take data and to compile it, so we were able to show to everyone who was there on the spot. We had the facilitators kind of put in some data. As you can see, diversity was, with a word cloud, the biggest words are the ones that got the most responses, and so that came through loud and clear, and I will tell you, we got a great big old cheer from the crowd when that came up. Our second question was, "What would make Skokie even better?" We encourage people to think big about the future, what you would see here, experience. And there was a lot of different things in there, but things about the downtown and pedestrian safety were some of them that came up. And then, "What do we think to think about now to have the future that we want?" And as you can see, infrastructure was one of the things that came up, but there's a lot of other things, too. And again, you will have all this, you'll be able to kind of look at it at your leisure. And then, from those table clauses, then the butcher paper, we also were able to grab some of the information from them, and we've prioritized them into some different themes and how often they occurred. So again, these were more present things rather than future, but some of the things that were captured were things around environment, transportation, economic development. Again, the number in parentheses afterwards, all the way through the presentation, will show you how many times something came up as a theme. And then our final question was, we had two questions. One thing for Skokie to focus on, efforts and resource on over the next five years. They had two yellow post-it notes they were able to use, and then one blue post-it note, one thing that you love and you want to be able to keep in the future. So out of our blue post-it notes, we got things like infrastructure and transportation, economic development, downtown corridor revitalization, community engagement. These were some of the things that came up out of those. And then the thing that we love and need to keep, as you can see, diversity and inclusion came in top out of that. Also, community services and amenities, green spaces. And I heard a lot about green spaces, as we'll talk about when we get into the focus groups as well, and also public safety. Again, you can have an opportunity to look at all of this at your leisure. Are there any questions about that before I jump into the community survey results?
No, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So who did we hear from? So first of all, it's important to know, we've got 1,155 responses. So nicely done, Skokie, nicely done. In that, 93% said that they were a resident, 6% identified as a business owner, 5% said they owned property. Only 2% said none of the above. What that means is we really had a very small number of people who did not, who were not currently connected in Skokie. We asked people of their gender. For whatever reason, women always outnumber men when it comes to surveys, and Skokie was no different in that regard. What is your age? A lot of times, people think that senior citizens do not answer surveys, and that does not, it's not consistent with what we see, and it was not consistent with Skokie. So this is pretty typical of what I would have expected to see, so this was what I had expected to see. We've got about 33% that were senior citizens and answered. This is also very consistent. We're talking about strategic planning, we're talking about the future. Sometimes renters aren't sure they'll be in the community in the future, so they tend to answer surveys less often. So having 90% as homeowners is very consistent with what I see in these kinds of surveys. Yes, please.
So when we're looking at renter data, is there a way to take their responses out separately and look at those differently than the aggregated data?
So I can do some cross tabs. If there are some specific things that you'd like me to do, if you can do me a favor, just jot me a note, I will be happy to go ahead and do a little deeper dive.
Thank you very much.
Of course. We asked for, "What is your race?", and so we know that this is, while not probably consistent with the demographics, we do know that this is consistent with what we see with survey data. So again, this is not a surprise. I'm happy to see that we did get as many responses as we did. We got some nice diversity there. Unfortunately, it's never, we just don't see that in survey data. Unfortunately, it is not generally consistent with the demographics of the community. Does your member of your household have a disability? Doing a little higher than this, so that surprised me. Children 17 or under, so we heard from a lot of families. Members of your family 65 or older? We also heard from a fair number of senior citizens, which also corresponds with the data that we saw earlier. Part of what I'm looking for in this is I'm looking for indications that people are answering the questions consistently, to make sure that what I'm seeing from the data just makes sense. So a lot of the data that I'm seeing kind of checks itself, and I was very happy to see that. "What do you like best about living in Skokie?" Things like location, parks and recreation services, areas. I want to talk for a second about Village Services. That does not normally show up on my top three. So this is going to be one of those times where Skokie, give yourselves a pat on the back, because this is not something that I normally see. Peaceful community. I want to talk about schools for a second. Why do I ask about schools? You have no control over the schools as a village. The answer is, if we don't ask about the schools in this sort of way, we'll hear about it in the open comments. This just gives us a way to have a little bit cleaner data by asking for it here. Does that make sense? Okay. "What do you like best about living in Skokie?" Again, diversity shows up loud and clear with that. "How important are the following to your quality of life?" Public safety. So these are essential, more than 55%. Public safety is strongly correlated with residence satisfaction. Makes sense. If you feel safe, you're very happy with where you live. So this is very consistent with what I see. Village Services being this high, again, not normally this high, but we're seeing very high on Village Services all the way through. Schools is often very high. Want to go ahead and take a slice of this slightly different way? So this is the same question, we're just now looking at essential and somewhat important. Public safety. 97% say it's important to your quality of life. Again, very consistent with what makes sense, so that's not surprising. Village Services, parks and parks, neighborhood appearance, housing. Housing is becoming more of an issue nationally. Local stores and shopping, we're going to be talking a lot about economic development. This is one of the first places that it really shows up. Affordability, cost of living, we're also going to be talking more about. Again, this is one of the first places it really shows up. What are some of the things that are not as important to you? Not very important or not at all important? Employment opportunities, public transit, schools, accessibility. So these were things that people were saying, "Just not as important to me as some of the others." "How satisfied are you with the quality? Fire and emergency medical response?" For the record, we did not just ask about general Village Services in this one, we pulled out a couple of them. Parks and parks facilities, police, general quality of life, and drinking water. Again, we're just kind of taking one more slice down on this. And again, quality of life, very high, 88%. Police, fire, emergency response, neighborhood appearance, these are all very nice scores. Interesting, noticed that drinking water was both on high and low. I sometimes can't explain it, this is one of those I can't explain. Roads, roads often, particularly in Illinois, winds up coming up pretty high, and a lot of that is because there's a lot of confusion sometimes around jurisdiction, so I have no idea about the roads that are actually the responsibility of Skokie. A lot of times, they're actually maintained by IDOT, and the jurisdiction that it's within the jurisdiction kind of gets the rap for it. I don't know if that is the case here or not, but if that sounds like it's ringing a bell, sometimes that's what the case is. Drinking water, neighborhood appearance. So what are the most important things for a strong and healthy community? And they could choose up to three. Again, sense of safety and security. Are you seeing that trend here? Very consistent with what we see. High-quality Village Services, again, very much a trend there. Being a welcoming community is not something I often see. Very consistent with Skokie. Three most important things, this was where they were able to put in if they had something else, and as you can see, there was all sorts of things that they had. So things like safety, development, housing, taxes downtown. There were a variety of different things. I will be giving you this, so you can look at the actual responses as well, those open text. How important are these to the future? Once again, we've got a safe community coming in at first, the highest. Also, a good place to raise a family. Schools, affordable Philip's Services. Welcoming place for diverse communities, again, very high, very consistent with what I've learned about Skokie. High-quality school system's an important factor. These were just, if they strongly agreed with this. I'll let you guys go ahead and just take a look at that real quick. And then, the extent to which you agree or disagree with the following statements. Taking different slices of this, and I want to go down, if you look at the second to the last and the third to the last one. Village is effective at communicating with residents. Again, this is, or your community survey. Take a bit of a pat on the back, Skokie. Those are among the highest scores I've seen, and I give this survey a lot. So to have 82% that strongly or somewhat agree with the Village is effective at communicating with residents is much higher than I normally see. And the Village of Skokie has a good reputation, again, much higher than I normally see. Take a pat on the back for that one. So what are some of the things and some of the statements that they disagreed with? Infrastructure. I heard a lot about the water main breaks on Valentine's Day, so I was not at all surprised to see this. Some of the other things in there, fiscally responsible with its resources, may be tied to that a little bit as well. Any additional comments to share? Wow, did we have comments? So I want to talk about this for a second. I expected to get more from Skokie. I normally have 15, 20% of people who take the survey who respond. Yeah, I had well over a third, so there was a lot of time spent kind of analyzing some data, but these are some of the larger categories that we found things in. Again, you guys have got a very engaged community, and that came through in the survey as well. So you guys definitely had me do my work when it came to data analysis. These were some of the larger themes, and as you can see, we went ahead and organized it. Do you have any questions? I know I just spit a lot of data at you, but you can look at this later. Yes, please.
Thank you. For presenting a lot of the information, I did notice the emergent theme of diversity and such, but then I go back to the demographic slide, where you said you only had, if you could.
Yeah.
Go back real quick, that'd be great.
Oh, boy, you're asking me to do this.
Yeah, it's going.
Here we go. Hold on, I can make this happen. Yes, here we go.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering, I remember this came up when we initially agreed to move forward.
Yes.
And the specific question that I asked was, "What exactly would you do to engage more stakeholders in the community so that we can have a good perspective of the data that you collected?" And was just curious to know, with these very low percent, and I get it, you know, it's consistent, but, you know, I was hopeful that we would get a larger representation. Just wondering, what above and beyond practices did you consider when getting this information?
Absolutely. So the survey was translated into, I believe, 11 languages. So Survey Monkey actually changed things on us right before the survey was launched, and it no longer could be read by Google Translate, so we had to go through and actually translate the survey into different languages and manually load it into Survey Monkey, which was done. We went through, and when I went and did the focus group with the English language learners, we went ahead and we distributed the survey link to them as well as to the cultural groups. So the Spirit Committee, they were also tasked with really trying to help us to get that out to as broad of representation as we could in Skokie. There are certain, there are simply certain populations that do not tend to take surveys, young people as well, renters. I'll be honest, I'm actually, I was afraid these were going to be lower. This actually looks like pretty robust engagement to me, because when we think about younger people, renters, to have, let me go back to, to have 7% of renters, that's higher than I normally see. This is unfortunately, this is survey research. I understand that we always want better, I always want better, but we also try to supplement that then with focus groups, specifically with English language learners, by making sure that the focus groups were with cultural groups, that we were really being very proactive in our ways of other ways that we were reaching people.
And I know you mentioned before, too, that you would go to them. Like what, when you talked about going to the different subgroups, like what exactly does that mean?
Yeah, so English language learners, I went to them and...
And I'm not trying to...
Yeah, no, 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 no.
I just want to understand, like, what is going to them?
Yeah, that was, and I, forgive me, I forget.
The English Language Learners Parents Center, is that where you went?
Yes, yes.
Keith, I think she also went to the Early Childhood Alliance. Did you, did I hear?
I went to, maybe it was the Early Childhood, I'm sorry. I went to a location where, and I forget what the exact name was. Can...
Well, it's either the English Language Learners Parents Center or the Early Childhood Alliance.
The Early Childhood Alliance.
Was it?
Okay, thank you.
That's unobten. It's a newer facility for young children, but it is a very multicultural community.
Yes. I learned how to say "thank you" in eight languages when we were done. So we had, we did that with translators. Again, we went out to, we did not hold, we did not hold the focus groups in Village Hall because sometimes there can be some distrust of government. So we went to other places. We were, we held focus groups at the storefront, we held them at the library, both of which tend to be neutral places, and then I also went and I held the focus group at that other location.
And then, members of the Spirit Committee, which was a volunteer group from the community to help spread the word about the strategic plan, they went to local businesses, they went to Cabo House, they went to Soulgood, and some other places in the community.
Didn't one of them actually go to the CTA station or get on a bus?
They went on a 98 bus, yeah.
Right, right, right. And I, just quickly, I would like to, Paul Williams, who led that, is leading the Spirit Team effort for us, is here, as is Clifton McReynolds. Clifton is new resident to the community, but he stepped right in and got involved, so grateful to both of you and everyone who served on that team and continues to serve.
I appreciate the effort. Let's just kind of raise our standards.
Mayor, I appreciate that. Please understand, I am not part of your community, so part of what I have to do is I have to work within your community, because I'm coming in from the outside, so doing everything I can to work with those existing relationships of trust.
Right. But you're facilitating.
Absolutely.
So you know the questions, and you know the push and pulls and how to navigate that space.
Absolutely. Yes, please.
Trustee Schechter.
Thank you. Just following along the same lines, when you did those focus groups of people who are not white and, you know, where English is not their first language, did their responses differ from what you're saying came out in the surveys or in the community forum?
So we're going to be talking about the focus groups a little bit more in a second. I actually have an entire section that is devoted to them. What I would say is that a lot of the, a lot of the information ties together in a lot of ways, which you'll see as we kind of go through. I will say that there are some specific challenges for those where English is not their first language. There are some real barriers there, and that certainly came through in the conversations that we had. And I'll talk about that a little bit more as we get there.
I'd like to mention, I had the, I was able to provide a brief greeting at the October 5th Community Visioning Session. I spoke and left, as I was instructed to do.
Yes.
But I will say, I did, I was pleased to see diversity reflected around the room. And a particular shout-out, and this delighted me, there was at least one teacher, Kristy Pomeranki Schneider at Niles North, who made it a class assignment for her government. They got extra... they got extra credit for her government students if they came, and just about every table had a high school student at it, which, sitting there, which I thought was terrific. So, we did get the voices of those young, those young people reflected in the conversations.
And they talked, and as I was walking around, I was watching them speak. So, we did get, there's many aspects, as all of you know, to diversity. So, we got diversity of age, of gender, of ethnicity, of race, there was a whole lot of different aspects of that that we were able to get at the visioning session, and we purposely tried to get through the focus groups.
Any other comments or questions? Trustee Iverson.
Yes.
Were you able or allowed to go to religious institutions?
So, we actually had a, we had a group for leaders of religious organizations that we invited them, and so we had multiple, we had some late people, we also had some of the actual faith leaders, the religious leaders themselves, who came in, and we had a focus group that was comprised of them as well.
We also, Trustee Iverson, we, I've started a Skokie Faith Leaders Council, and the first meeting of that group was in late August, and I did mention it and describe the strategic plan and the community engagement process to that group, and there were what, John? There were about fifteen?
Right.
More than that, maybe, fifteen?
Maybe even over twenty?
Right, members of the clergy, it was a real good interfaith representation that day. And we gave a quick overview, actually, we had our second meeting last week, and we gave a quick overview of how the process had gone. So, we did make an effort to reach out to the faith leaders.
Thank you.
And we encouraged them to get their congregants involved.
Yes. I do want to mention as well, and I will keep on going here a second, when I, when I went to the English language learners, we also had both male and female parents who were there with children, so it was not all just mothers, we also had fathers there as well. So, again, we had some different perspectives, which was what the hope was.
Let me just add some of the communications that happened for the whole entire strategic planning process. When we were communicating, you know, starting in the summer and the backlog bash, and talking about the surveys now open and strategic planning is coming, we were communicating with the houses of worship and with the school districts and all of the community events that we could address, and so that was another way that we were communicating all of the opportunities of the strategic planning process through a number of outlets, just to connect those dots as well.
Yeah, I'd like to also give another quick shout-out to Trustee Kamani Levy, who participated in the Spirit Team, thank you for doing that, Trustee. Other questions?
I'm going to keep going then.
Okay.
Internal stakeholder survey results, so this was our staff. How would you rate the quality of services at Skokie? You would think that staff always rate services well, they don't. So, this was actually very, very good, eighty-six percent excellent or good, again, very nice scores on that. Quality of life, we've got seventy-two percent excellent or good, that's, I would say that is, certainly is above average. And then, how much of these things should be a priority? You know, that whole public safety thing, that trend keeps right on going, doesn't it? So, also, infrastructure. It's always interesting to talk to staff, because they're the ones who know what's underneath the streets, right? They know some of these things, so it's interesting to hear some of this. So, they saw as high priorities, over fifty percent, of public safety, infrastructure, financial sustainability, and economic development. You're going to see these themes continue to go through as we talk about focus groups. Again, just taking a little bit of a different slice, but I want to talk about recruiting a village staff real quick. So, that was something that is an insider view that is important. When we're looking at this now, we have got a full eighty percent that say that's either a higher median priority, that's important to note. Local government is a tough place right now to recruit. It started with police officers several years ago, kind of moved into fire, public works has gotten more difficult. So, the fact that they are identifying that as a medium or high priority, that is something that is, that we probably would not have gotten by looking at other information, but the fact that they are identifying it here, eighty percent of them as a medium or high priority, tells me that there is still some concern about the ability to recruit in local government, and that's not a Skokie thing, that's a local government thing, that's what I see consistently in survey results. This is also one of those things that, you know, for the people who are doing it, what is kind of their perspective? Okay, Skokie operates with openness and transparency, we've got almost seventy percent that strongly or somewhat agree with that. Skokie is open to new ideas and ways of doing things, this is a little bit better than what I normally see. Ah, there was one more in there, I thought, nope, okay. I'm likely to stay with Skokie for another year. This is really important, because when we're talking about recruitment and retention, I've seen some pretty scary numbers here, where I've had to have some pretty difficult conversations. I don't have to have that with you, that makes me happy. So, the fact that you guys have got eighty-seven percent does not mean that you can take your eye off the ball when it comes to retention, but it means that you guys are not critical, and that's a good thing. So, you've got eighty-seven percent of your people are saying, yep, I'm going to be here a year from now, that's a good thing. I would apply to this position again. Again, these are better numbers than what I normally see, some of these numbers can get a little scary sometimes. I would recommend working at Skokie to friends. We've got almost eighty percent that somewhat or strongly agree with that. That says a lot, that they're happy enough here that they would want to recommend this to their friends. That's something huge for Skokie. Any questions about that? Yes, please.
Trustee Pure Slovene.
Thank you, thank you, this has been extremely interesting, and some of the results are not what I expected, so it's good to see. I noticed that public safety does continue to be one of the top priorities or concerns of people who did the survey, and I'm wondering, from your perspective of doing this for the other villages over the years, does that trend differently based on the political landscape? Like, for example, you heard the comments tonight, people were concerned about ICE, of course, or antisemitism, or hatred, et cetera, so that, to me, is part of public safety.
Absolutely.
So, would you say that, like, five years ago, would it have trended differently in different villages?
Yeah. Twenty-five, thirty years, going back that far, when we're looking at resident satisfaction data, the resident satisfaction has always been highly correlated with a feeling of safety, so those two things have always gone together. Do I think that the current environment, certainly, I think that that may have taken something that seemed like a median priority and now made it a high priority, but what I will tell you though, is also, we'll talk about this a little bit in the focus groups, by and large, people do feel very safe in Skokie. But I also think that this is an interesting time for a lot of people, and a lot of people in Skokie. And so, I certainly do not want to discount that that may be something that we're seeing in some of the figures, however, just as a general, just in general, seeing that as the top priority, that is very consistent with what I see. Are the numbers maybe a little higher than what it would be if it wasn't for the current circumstances? Perhaps.
Other questions?
Yes, please.
Yes, Trustee Schechter.
Yeah, I was just, I had raised this when you first introduced yourself, my concern about the lack of open-ended questions, so, you know, I just, when I was campaigning for trustee, I actually did something similar with asking people to fill out post-it notes with what is your, you know, one vision per post-it. Didn't have any preconceived ideas or anything, and there were things that people said that actually, I don't, didn't necessarily see here, like, especially a lot with regard to small, you know, incentivizing small businesses having, you know, I know you had downtowns just generally, but just, I'm just a little concerned about nuances in responses that may be lost because we use these big, wide buckets, you know?
I will give you all the detail that you want, I am happy to turn over all of those free text responses. What I'm trying to do is not have us sit here until next Thursday.
Right.
So, that is the goal of kind of trying to give you some bigger buckets, but I am happy to, and I, the intent is to share those free text responses as well, because I agree there is some nuance that is lost, but again, we would literally, I was, was four hundred in some free text responses, we would literally be here until next Thursday if I really did a deep dive on that, but I also think it's important, because people took the time to respond, so I do hope that you will go through and read those.
I'd like to interject, I also think it's always important and enlightening when the village conducts our triennial survey, as we've done through the National Research Center every year, every three years since two thousand and three, there's, every single one of those has had an open-ended question, and I would encourage any of you to go, that data's on the village website, go look, go to the very end, and you can read verbatim, and it's usually eight to ten pages of very interesting, insightful, really, you know, they get into the grassroots-type comments that I think you're looking for, so certainly this will be just more of that, but that's a place to start, right here, right now.
Yeah, I will also say that I heard a lot of, I love Skokie, it's great, I mean, so I do hope that you'll read it too, simply because there's a lot of people who really love this community, and they took advantage of those comments to express that.
Trustee Levy.
So, I was very surprised to see that public transportation in general was not very high as a priority, that really did shock me, and I'm wondering, you know, kind of thinking about the nuance piece that Trustee Schechter was saying, how much of the response to infrastructure challenges actually have to do with public transportation systems?
So, I'm going to answer that with information I got from the focus groups. So, information from the focus groups was, a lot of the stuff with public transportation was, they are able to walk to the L pretty easily, they're able to go to Morton Grove and jump on the metro, and so, there are some populations within this community, particularly the elderly, who, for which public transportation is really a challenge. For other people within the community, they're able to, particularly if they're trying to get downtown, so I really think it depends on the seat that you sit in, and, you know, what your particular situation is, as to whether or not it's a challenge.
Do you have data that speaks to how many people are private car owners versus how many people actually use public transportation? I do not have that information, I don't know if CMAP might have something about that?
We have the number of vehicle stickers, and then we have ridership numbers that we can provide.
Okay, keep on going then.
Keep going.
All right, let's talk about focus groups. So, as I said, I was here for four days of focus groups, twelve focus groups, one hundred and twenty-three total participants. So, I'm not going to go through all of this, the important things to know are, the meetings ran for ninety minutes, I'm going to give you a narrative report, because if you do twelve groups times ninety minutes, there's no way, again, we would be here until next Tuesday, but I hope, again, that you do read that report. The other thing that's important for you to know is that all of the participants were told that the information was going to be anonymous, so I did ask, and in most cases, somebody from the village just kind of shot, started us off with, thank you so much for coming, because it's important for them to, you know, when possible, hear from somebody in the village, thanking them for coming, and letting them know it does make a difference, but then also knowing that what they say is going to become confidential. So, these are the questions that we had. What do you like best, advantages of living or working here? Sometimes I did not specifically say that, because the conversation itself answered that question. Some of the challenges, if you could change things, what could you change? What do you think about now to have the future we want? And then, two things, what efforts and resources to over the next three to five years, and what one thing should we leave alone, because we love it and it works well, we have to make sure to maintain it. So, what residents value most, diversity and inclusion with eleven groups, again, I'm not going to go through all of this, because I'll let you guys go ahead and read this. But a couple of notes here, village government was accessible and responsive, fire and police department were also praised, location and character was actually six groups, I've got a typo there that I will correct. Some of the housing challenges, so this was discussed by eleven groups, and just because they're here does not mean that all eleven groups discussed it, but just these were some of the themes that came out during the eleven groups, but it came up in eleven groups. I want to talk for a second about housing. So, with focus groups, my job is to collect data, I have to make an exception with that when it comes to housing, because there's just so much confusion about the words affordable housing, that a couple of years ago, I started making an exception there. And as people say, I'm either for or against affordable housing, I say, can you help me explain what that is? So, if we have got a senior who's lived in the community their entire lives, and now they really can't maintain their single-family home, they need a smaller footprint, maybe all in one level, is that the kind of, and they're on a fixed income, is that kind of housing that you would support? Well, yes, of course, I would love to have that. Okay, so just kind of helping to expand what that is, I think that sometimes there is some stigma around the words affordable housing, so I introduced the term life stage or life cycle housing, the idea that there could be housing at a variety of price points for people in all stages of life, and is that something that people would be open to? So, if you see life cycle or life stage housing, that is the one caveat I make with not ever just collecting information, because there's just so much confusion around housing. So, life stage gaps, seniors can't downsize is one of the things, young families not being able to find suitable housing, and then, I heard quite a bit about rental conditions, and a lot of the housing stock just kind of needing attention. Infrastructure came up in ten groups, talked a lot about water and sewer, which is not uncommon though, because I know that you guys had something in Valentine's Day, but that's what I talk about in all communities, because we've all got aging stuff underneath our streets. And then, kind of just that need for that infrastructure planning. Downtown and economic development was a big topic of conversation. In Skokie, as I believe in most communities, there is, I think that there is an outsized expectation of how much revenue economic development will generate, and so, I think that sometimes people think that if we just have a few more stores in, that, you know, we're just going to be able to pay for everything, and so, that really tends to be a focus of attention, is for the revenue. But also, everybody really wants it for restaurants and retail stores, because they want the fun stuff as well. So, there's kind of that two sides to that, and I very much heard that in Skokie as well. One of the things I talked about was really limited evening destinations, and then, you know, kind of needing things like, you know, Chamber Downtown Merchants Association, and then also this perceived focus imbalance between Old Orchard and the rest of the village. Pedestrian and bicycle safety, we're talking about missing sidewalks, whenever we start talking about kids and their safety, that is always a point of concern, and just wanting to make sure that kids can get to school safely. Poor lighting in some places, there was a couple of streets, specifically Crawford was one of them. Speeding traffic, people are talking about, that even though the village speed limits are consistently low, people are not always following that. And then, e-bikes, you guys are just like everybody else that you're talking now about e-bikes. Communication barriers, and this was, again, particularly that English language learners group. It is really, really difficult for them to, because there's not as many opportunities for them to learn English because of childcare, and yet, not having childcare really does impact their ability to be able to navigate through the community. So, these were just, and I will also say, because of the fact I was working through a translator, I got, normally, I would redirect a little bit in terms of what are village services and what weren't, I was working through a translator, and there was some nuance there that I wasn't going to try and work through the translator, so I was just kind of collecting some information. So, some of this is reflective of that, there are things here that, you know, bilingual clinicians are not necessarily something that the village is responsible for, but at the same time, though, it's one of the barriers that they're facing. So, there were some of the things that they were talking about was, you know, just need for, you'll divide, most of them have got phones, but very few of them actually have computers. And then, just some other things, we talked about rats, we talked about senior services and childcare, and then also homelessness, and just some of the challenges for the community with those things as well. And then, kind of that vision for the future, that strategic balance growth, things like misuse developments, the green space was really important, it came up a lot in our conversation. Learning from neighboring community successes and failures, diversifying revenue sources, long-term fiscal planning, and then, making Skokie this destination for things like evening activities, themed districts, and then, there was also this idea of... And then there was also this idea of really deciding what Skokie should look like and then waiting for the businesses to kind of, and then, you know, kind of the, if we build it, they will come, in terms of making Skokie a destination. Inclusive leadership development, one of the things that came up, and it was in several of the groups, is that they noted that when looking at leadership in, and this is not a village thing, but just in the community, if we're looking at nonprofits, if we're looking at other taxing districts, other community organizations, that there was not as much diversity reflected in the leadership. And that that was something that they were hoping was going to change. Also that they wanted to engage young adults. Infrastructure investment was definitely something that they were talking about as well. And then social services, the fact that Skokie has a health department was something that was a point of pride and that they are really hoping that Skokie will be able to maintain. And then the last thing was, those last two questions, everybody gets a chance to dig in with the two things, the vote efforts and resources to, and then one thing we need to make sure to maintain because it's important. And the way I explain this is, I am putting them in the exact same situation, I am putting all of you in, in just a few weeks with strategic planning because it's about prioritization, right? So how do you narrow it down to the things that are the most important? And this is what they came up with. So a lot of the stuff had to do with economic development, business, governance, planning, civic engagement, housing in neighborhoods, transportation, walkability. Again, I will give all of this to you with the actual things that people said, but this is a lot of the things that came up. One thing to leave alone or maintain, village services. Look how big that is. Village services are very much appreciated. Village and public services are right at the top of the list. People really do appreciate the services that they get at the village and the quality that they get. Community and belonging, when we're looking at the cleanliness of the village, I mean, that's also kind of village and public services as well. They were talking about the snow plowing and the plumbing of the sidewalks and things like that. Village government and governance and administration. It was funny, some people love wards, some people hate wards. That was in there as well.
Yes, please.
So going back to public transportation.
Yes.
So I couldn't help but notice that in the focus group, public transportation was pretty major. And in the survey, not so major. So what accounts for the difference between the data you're collecting in a focus group versus the data you're collecting in a survey?
So I put down, if you notice, I've kind of lumped that in with transportation, walkability and safety. So if we actually pulled out public transportation, it would not be nearly as high. Let's, let's take a look at that raw data, I'm happy to discuss that with you a little bit more. But that really was more about that walkability and that, that safety. Certainly, public transportation, for some people, again, is important and it did come up some. But, you know, when you're bucketing things, sometimes you're bucketing things in kind of a mobility thing, which is what this is, and you lose some of that nuance. And I would suggest in this case, that's, that may be what you're seeing. But let's look at the raw data on that. Because I've got their exact, exactly what they said.
And so, and so what you're saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, is that the focus group has more nuance, so it doesn't fit quite as neatly into survey questions? I, I mean, I guess what I'm trying, what I'm trying to square right now is why there seems to be, and I was just using public transportation as a piece.
Sure.
But why there seems to be, like, economic development and business, you can see right here, is top of mind. Public safety is top of mind in the survey. So what accounts for those differences between?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Because if you look at the questions that are being asked, when public safety is an option that you are being given, that's what people choose. The questions for the focus groups are very broad, very general. And one of the things is that particularly in communities where people feel safe, and what I would say is that, my guess is that if I was to go and hold focus groups this week, my, my guess is that the conversations would be very different. Some of that does have to do with timing, and I think that without question, based on what I have heard here tonight, and just living in Northern Illinois myself, people do not feel as safe today in communities with a lot of diversity as they did two months ago. Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Schecter.
Yeah, just, just also following up on trustee Levy's comment, I, I feel like the things that you revealed from the focus groups are much more like my experience of what I'm hearing from people, even, even the comments I saw about, you know, rental property standards, you know, things that are of real concern to renters. But just across the board, these just resonate a little bit more with, with what I hear.
Yeah. And that's the fun of data collection, right? With the survey, we ask a little bit more specific questions because we want to make it easy for people to take the survey because we want to hear from as many people as possible. But in focus groups, we have the opportunity to really hear that qualitative data. That's why I'm always thrilled when I work with communities and I'm allowed to collect data in both ways, because you really do get different nuance from the community when you're able to collect data in a couple of different ways.
Okay. So given that, what is the demographic makeup of the focus groups versus the demographic makeup of the survey?
So demographics are a very funny thing when we're talking about focus groups because, I mean, I can tell you again that I had 21 people who were at the English Language Learners. Other than that, I don't precisely know. I can estimate that there were people of, you know, certainly different ages. I was not going through and specifically recording that, nor quite honestly would, I know there's such nuance. We come to things like race and ethnicity that I wouldn't even start, I, I hesitate to even begin to suggest how someone would choose to, you know, identify the way that they walk through the world. And I say that as a person who is, and my husband is half-Japanese and half-Austrian, and so he walks through the world in a different way than I do. So I say that with that perspective.
So there was no piece in the focus group of self-reporting those same demographics?
There was not.
Okay.
Any other questions? Trustee Iverson.
You met, you are going to give us the detailed data.
That's correct.
And, and in that, all the, the metrics and characteristics that we've seen in the presentation will be present, so we'll be able to dissect the data.
Yes, and, yes, and not only can you, but I hope that you do, because we have people who've really invested 90 minutes of their time in a focus group, you know, six to eight minutes taking a survey. We were in the visioning session, I believe, for about 90, 100 minutes total. People have invested their time, so I certainly hope that you will, that you will enjoy hearing from some of the different perspectives of the community. I think probably a lot of this stuff, you probably have a good idea, you might find a couple of surprises in there, but I hope that you have a chance to really dig in. There's a lot of it. So I hope you've got your weekend free.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the report of the village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, mayor and trustees, and good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding the creation of a housing fund in the Skokie Housing Land Trust. And Justin Malone, our neighborhood and housing coordinator, is approaching the podium and he is going to walk through the recommendation that is before you this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Justin Malone with the Community Development Department. Tonight, we have a short presentation about establishing a housing fund and a Skokie Housing Land Trust. The staff recommendation is the adoption of some updates to the village code in two parts. And the first part is enabling a housing land trust, which I'll talk about on the next slide, and then also to create a housing fund from which we will be able to have eligible housing activities funded through. So the purpose of the housing land trust, the, the purpose of a land trust in general is to promote homeownership. And in, not, homeownership in terms of a traditional method is not always available for everybody. So a land trust model effectively helps by making the house cost less for the, the property owner. So the village would purchase a property and effectively own the land underneath it, while the house itself would be owned by a homeowner, an eligible homeowner. So the village would retain ownership of the underlying land while the homeowner pays their mortgage like anybody else who owns a property, and they are able to build wealth that way. If the homeowner decides that they are growing this home, or maybe they have to relocate for whatever reason, they would sell the home and then another eligible homeowner would come into the, the home and, again, would still be an affordable method, and so that home remains affordable in perpetuity. So this is just a method that we can have one property that we have a little bit more control over, and this typically done, some, what I've seen, some mostly single-family homes, but also maybe some condos in, in other communities. But it is made possible by a village-backed trust in which the home is owned through. So while the village may play a larger role at the beginning of the process, and they authorize the funding of the housing land trust, most municipalities don't actually manage the land trust themselves, just, or solely by themselves. So they would, what we would suggest is authorizing a non-for-profit, not-for-profit partner to carry out the operations for this land trust program. The not-for-profit partner would be able to assist with housing, or I'm sorry, program administration. They would help to go out and be able to find these properties, purchase them, upgrade them or fix them up so that they're nice to put on the market. They would be able to help with any legal or financial management. They also help eligible property applicants do, through, uh, financial, financial eligibility screening and, and kind of, I'm forgetting the word at the moment, literacy training, financial literacy. And they would also be able to look for eligible applicants for this as well, especially for honing in on a specific affordable group. But I want to come back to the governance part of it too, so this would allow for the governance for the village via a Skokie representative. A lot of these not-for-profit partners have representatives from the communities that they are partnering with on their board to actually help create a voice on, within their not-for-profit and be able to reflect the, the community that they're a part of. Just a couple of the neighboring communities with land trust policies nearby, Highland Park and Evanston are pretty, early on with things, Lake Forest and Northbrook as well came through, and then Wilmatt is, is probably one of the more recent ones, I would say. So the other part of the staff recommendation is to establish a housing fund. So we talked about the land trust, but the other part is a fund, that we would be able to have some grants that we would set aside to assist small building property owners with some repairs or some other, some other modifications to their property that they may not be able to be able to get to on their own. So we're targeting the two and four unit properties in Skokie. We do have a nice amount of middle housing in Skokie, and some of them are, you know, haven't been touched since when they were first built. So especially some of the small mom-and-pop rentals, those are things that we were trying to help. We're talking about up to $50,000 per grant. Not everybody maybe need that much, but this is something that could really make an impact on these small buildings. And then also, we would limit that to not more than $300,000 annually. So we would be able to help a handful of these owners every year. And this, this program, I would, I would just want to point out too, is different from the current program that the village has, the Home Improvement Program, which is funded from HUD. That program is funded, focuses more on, this, I'm sorry, this program focuses more on, uh, single-family homes, whereas this one would be able to help those other properties that are not necessarily getting as much help. There's also the types of repairs that HUD is kind of strict on. They're not able to do anything that's strictly for cosmetic purposes. They're, they have, we have a hard time qualifying things about fences, driveways, garages, and so with this kind of funding, we would be able to target those, maybe those repairs that are needed that we're not able to help with that program. And also with renters as well, the HUD program is a little bit hard to help with renters, and this one would be a, a good way to help that way. So first, we would want to make sure that we're able to get some funds in this housing fund. And so one example of a way that we could get house, funds in here is through a fee and lieu, which is, sometimes developers choose not to or are not able to have the affordable housing onsite, and so they would have, they would pay the fee. Right now, for example, if the 4,600 main property or development was to go, as it stands, they're not looking at adding any onsite affordable housing units, and so they would be paying into the fund, and that's over $400,000. And so we're looking at building this pot already with some development that we have in the queue. And so by that, by the time we get to, say, a million dollars, we could really make some, some changes happen. So once we get this established, then we could move forward with that. So when we do have the funds available, we'd be able to choose a not-for-profit management partner, and we'd be able to work with them to purchase and rehab some, a property in Skokie, identify some eligible residents, and then they would also arrange any property sales or management that, that we need to do for that, with that program. So again, the staff recommendation is for the adoption of updates to the village code for the creation of a housing fund and a Skokie Housing Land Trust. So I'm here for any questions.
So I think, should I call for a motion first? So before we get into our discussion, we need a motion for approval to enable a housing land trust and?
A motion to approve.
Motion for approval to enable a housing land trust and creating a housing fund. Is there a motion? Trustee Pierre Slovan, is there a second? Trustee Lisa Levy, thank you. Now we'll start our discussion. Trustee Levy.
So when you mentioned fee and lieu for new developments and such, as a way to fund the land trust, how are those fees determined? And how does that, how does that stack up to what the funding needs for the trust would ultimately be?
So the fees structure is in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that was passed in May of 2024, I believe. And so that is a per property or per unit cost, I believe it's $100,000 per unit that they, if they are not willing to provide onsite, then they would have to pay that amount. And a second part of your question?
Well, I want to, I want to get some clarification.
Sure.
So it's $100,000 per unit regardless of whether the unit is two-bedroom, three-bedroom, studio, et cetera?
So Johanna has some clarity?
I'm looking at them.
So, good evening, Johanna Niden, Community Development Director. So the number of units required to be onsite when you do a new development is based on a percentage, and Justin's pulling up the table right now, based on a percentage of the total units. And then there's a further divide, if, if they had some kind of assistance, it's slightly increased, and then it's tiered based on the size of the building. So once those, based on those percentages, that percentage of units need to be onsite. And we don't do like four and a half units, we do five units. So if the developer has determined based on their performer and their financial situation with that particular development, that it, it is not possible for them to provide them onsite, we have, and most ordinances have this, an opportunity to pay a fee and lieu. So per unit, so if they had to provide five onsite, instead of providing five onsite, they would provide a fee and lieu at time of permit issuance for 100,000 per unit. So five, if there's five units, that's $500,000 of fee and lieu. That is, that is, that is something that's only approved by the village board. So that when the developer is coming to their, to this body for their final approval, that is one of the items that is before the board for review, if they're not going to comply with the onsite units.
I understand. What I'm asking is, so a potential affordable unit, that's three bedrooms, say, instead of it being an affordable unit that a family could rent, it rents at market rate, and that's still a $100,000 fee despite it being perhaps some, you know, a, a more needed property? instead of it being an affordable unit that a family could rent, it rents at market rate and that's still a hundred thousand dollar fee despite it being perhaps some, you know, a more needed property?
I'm not sure I totally understand your question. The, the, the one thing to to note is the affordable units are divided up by unit type. So if there's ten percent of the units are studios and twenty percent are, you know, so it's, you may not get that three bedroom unit in that, in that. If there's four units and the way the math kind of works out, you may not have one unit of every type in the building. Because if there's a more, if two and one bedrooms are more popular in the building, you might, we, they might be offering two or one bedroom onsite units. So it's, it's a little more, I just want to emphasize, it's a little more nuanced. We're not necessarily losing three bedroom apartment buildings when we do a fee and lieu, we may just, units, we may just be not having one and two bedrooms for the fee and lieu.
Okay. And then does the fee and lieu um increase when, you know, inflation occurs or? So that's, that's flat. So in ten years, when everything is fifty percent more expensive than it is now, that fee and lieu would still be a hundred thousand dollars?
So it's a Skokie, a village of Skokie ordinance, it's in our code. So um often it is, I'm not, our ordinance was just adopted, but it, as market conditions change, it's often important to revisit over the course of time if things have changed. So I have worked in communities where we were really worried about making sure there are affordable condos onsite. Well, the market changed very significantly in, after the Great Recession, no condos were being built. So then we had to shift over to apartments. So sometimes you, we have to watch the market and and adjust as time goes. But um we, it's very difficult when you're writing these ordinances to build in plans for how you think things are going to go. Because in my experience, things never go the way we think they're going to go. They always change and the market has its own idea of doing things. So it's really, um I think it's, it's a very smart process to not always build in every, you know, we're going to escalate by two percent or we should, we should wait as time goes on and see what we, what the community needs and where the demand is to make sure you're making the the tune-ins, the tune-ups of of what the community needs.
Thank you. Trustee Schechter.
I, I'm just going to restrict myself to questions now, but I, I do have some comments and concerns. So but one que- question is, why is this being called a housing land trust when the term of art is community land trust? Because you can do a lot of things on a, you know, a community land trust. You can have rental housing on it, you can have small businesses on it. Because my concern is when you had that slide and the first bullet point was that the purpose of a community land trust is to promote homeownership. Well, the purpose of a community land trust is only in part around homeownership. The purpose of a community land trust is to um, you know, own and control land generally in the community and and hedge against displacement and promote um, you know, a sense of security in in a community. So I, I, I just want to understand why you're using this term H L T.
It looks like Barb, Barb, are you ready to jump in?
I would say, in the proposed changes in the ordinance, we do refer to it as a community land trust.
Yeah, I saw that and I, but it was just a little confusing because also in the, in the, but in the ordinance, it talks about that the housing fund, that everything is about homeownership, a community land trust will focus on homeownership. And that really isn't what a, why, why are we trying to restrict ourselves?
We've been talking about this for a couple of years now and it came out of the Plan Commission's report. Um and so the focus and the direction from the board in in previous discussions was a housing land trust, to focus on housing. Um and so that, that is where I think we've, we focused our cent- our center on housing. And I think your point is well taken about how to, how to secure the future of outcomes of certain land uses. But our, our work was focused on housing for this.
I also have another um question about all of the other communities that have these ordinances. They're all in the zoning code, but this has all been put in, in the human relations code.
Why is that?
Well, Barb's going to speak to that.
So I think when the affordability, housing affordability ordinance was passed, that's where it was decided to go um back in twenty twenty-four as opposed to the zoning code, chapter one eighteen.
Yeah, which I was opposed to then, so.
In the trust, the funds are not all in the, because we're also proposing the creation of a fund. The funds are not in the zoning code in many of these communities, if any.
And the housing fund, I believe, is not strictly to fund the community land trust. There's other uses available for that housing fund as well.
And the, the other, I just had one last question, which is, how is this being governed? You know, because you had somewhere here um that uh, you know, the preliminary qualifications establishing the community land trust and the village for financial approval for the affordable housing program. What does that mean, the village? Like what, what is the governance of the fund?
Is that the nonprofit partner?
So our, in talking to, we, we've worked closely with SEPA and the development of this and their discussion, they are, um to be clear, they're not our our selected partner. They've just been, they've been a very helpful um guide on, on this work. Uh so the, the vision there is, in the plan there is, we are enabling the creation of this land trust. And the funds that we have in the housing fund could be used to purchase property acquired in partnership. There would need to be separate um agreements and activities undertaken to build, to establish the relationship with a not-for-profit partner. That then the forms and the act, and the, and the other closing documents, and I think Barb will opine on this as well and offer information. But that would be managed through that partner. We're not, this body would not approve purchase of X property at this location and rehab funds for this. It's through a different mechanism. And then SEPA, if that's the kind of partner we would, we utilize, would, their governance of their community land trust would include, would be inclusive of somebody from Skokie to be sit on their board and to provide guidance on their activities.
So I'd like to drill down in that. When you say somebody from Skokie, is it staff? Is it an official? Is it someone else that we would appoint?
So.
Typically.
Uh from what I've heard typically, um it was somebody who's currently in the program already or somebody who has been in a uh housing in the community land trust. They like to use it, people who have had.
So someone who has benefited from?
Yeah, someone who has benefited from it.
So to start, we wouldn't have anyone?
It could also be a staff member as well.
So maybe to start, okay, that's something. Thank you. Trustee Robinson and then we'll go back to trustee Lisa Levy.
Just had a question about governance.
Yep.
And how important it is, I believe, uh to have community action involved with some of these decisions. Uh and I hear it's a representative from the village. Now, just to go back and talk about the sub-housing committee that we had, this was kind of a dream. I hope it wasn't like a pipe dream, uh that that would have been established to help govern and make decisions about land trusts. I mean, this is great. I should have started with the positives. This is amazing. Thank you for the thoughtful um presentation. Uh but, you know, where does it live and how does the community, how, how are they a part of it without it being in a housing uh commission, for exam- sample? And or, again, starting out, you know, what we had hoped would be the sub-housing committee.
Which we still have.
I know.
Right. So you're saying that, that in your mind, if I'm, if I'm understanding you, one option that you'd be interested in is having that group oversee it at least to start?
To support it in some way, absolutely, to have folks involved who could provide context, support and also represent the village.
Thank you.
So um one possibility would, to have a representative who was from the sub-housing land committee. Right?
Yeah, that's one way, but, you know, and they would represent the commission, the committee. And again, ultimately, as this thing grows, you know, to have the dream of a housing commission established um that talks about all this, you know, short-term rentals, you know, all, everything that we've talked about uh pertaining to uh housing. So I just didn't know as far as the flow, you know, where, is it the cart, cart before the horse or the horse before the cart? Or can we move together? I just wanted to be able to have a little bit more understanding about that piece.
It is difficult because um there is a little bit of, I don't know that there's even a cart at this point. Because we don't have it, we haven't accumulated any money. So I think we're, we're, we're getting a horse.
We're getting a horse.
And, and we have to get, we have to get the other parts, but we, we have to um, we have to set this up to, to build that. And I think the suggestion of utilizing the existing members of that body to feed into, if, if and when we get a partner to do this, that aligns nicely.
And I think that speaks to what we just heard from Cory in terms of the community feedback about the issues and the, the interest in housing. So, so the governance piece could be decided at a later date, once we have some money that we want to, that we can work with.
Right.
Okay. Trustee Lisa Levy. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, should that be a part, should that be a part of, of the motion that's currently on the floor?
So if there's directive on changing the ordinance that's attached, we can absolutely work with that. The motion is to approve the community land, the community trust, land trust and to approve the creation of a housing fund.
And, and this is the first conversation and so we appreciate the conversation, the discussion, the feedback. And so we can incorporate that in what comes back for, you know, the next reading, if it's going to be the final, the second and final reading, um depending on how the conversation, how it's received or um, you know, tonight is the first conversation. And so I think there's some topics that are being surfaced that we can give some additional thought to and incorporate into the document and then bring that back for, you know, consideration by the board.
Just don't want it to get lost.
Thank you. Trustee Lucy.
So speaking of money, besides the fee and the potential fee and lieu funding source, what are the other funding sources for the community land trust?
So right now, it's just fee and lieu.
Okay. So are there plans to find other funding sources? Or are we kind of relying on fee and lieu in perpetuity?
Well, I, I don't know that I would ever characterize, we'd ever rely on one single funding source in perpetuity. I think that's a, that's a discussion for as we continue to build, build out the work here. And the um housing subcommittee continues to talk about good policies and bringing in new things. We're, we're still, we're still building that momentum on what to do. Um when you identify other funding sources, you have to charge other fees. And that's, that is a different discussion in the context of broader, broader village work.
That, that's fair. I guess what, I guess what I'm really getting at is that if we're relying on fee and lieu and then we have developments, that that's what they're doing. My fear is that we're going to further stratify the, you know, the economic um wealth in different areas. So for example, if forty-six-hundred Main Street goes through as is and we have this fee and lieu, yay, we have four to, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars boom in the housing trust, yay. But then that area doesn't have affordable units. It changes the demographics of, of who's there and it cha- you know, like it, it, my concern is that if we're, if we're only doing that, then we're not actually thinking about how we can preserve the diversity of Skokie, which includes economic diversity, you know, that we love, that we just saw that everybody wants. I'm not attacking you, I'm just.
No, no, I understand. And then fee and lieu goes to the housing fund and then um remember, there is the housing rehab program that when we were, one of the things we heard during the um Plan Commission's process was that, that there's this, there's naturally occurring affordable housing in those rental spaces. And Cory's presentation about the quality of housing and rent, and our rental stock, making sure we're getting to some of those rental housing units and, and getting them to address some of the code issues. Um so that, those funds can be used for that as well.
Understood. My concern is that if we're taking fee and lieu so that we can fund the public land trust, then we have pockets of development that are public land trust and then we have pockets of development that continue to be market rate luxury developments. And that eventually creates neighborhoods where there's a lot of concentrated wealth and there's not a lot of economic diversity. And we know from studying the world and how various societies work that when we have more diversity, including economic diversity, that we have better social outcomes for everyone. So I, I guess I just would be interested to know how else we can diversify this fund so that we're not, we're not inadvertently creating these areas that are well-to-do and then other areas that, you know, are economically struggling and continue to do so.
John, did you want to say something and then we'll go to trustee Robinson?
Let me just add um to the conversation that Skokie is one of two handfuls of communities in the two hundred and fifty plus in the metropolitan area that have an inclusionary zoning ordinance. So when a developer comes to the community, they have the regulations that we have in place that they have to abide by. And so the preference, by the way, the inclusionary zoning ordinance is written, is that there's onsite affordable housing provided. But if the developer can't move forward with having it onsite, they can ask the board to do the payment in lieu instead of. And then we have these options of how that money can be spent. And so we're trying to ensure that the community is socio-economically integrated, but also within the context of the metropolitan area. And so that's, this is an important component of it, but so is the property standards um strategy that the community has. So is the neighborhood integrity ordinance with the rental registration. And so this is an, another tool in our toolbox, but it's, it is operating in the context of the, you know, our, our neighbors and developers making a choice on where they choose to invest and that sometimes the projects just aren't financially feasible. So all of that is wrapped up into this conversation, just to provide a little more context.
Trustee Robinson and then we're going to wrap the discussion up. Trustee Robinson.
Yeah, I was going to say exactly that, John, all of that. Uh but I'll add, well, not exactly that. Uh but I'll add, you know, the board also has an opportunity when we're looking at our budget year.
Right.
And also make other um decisions if we're looking at how do we continue creative ways to fund the trust. So.
I'd like to, quickly, please.
Well, I, I have some real concerns about amending an ordinance that I think is flawed to begin with. So just to answer um trustee Levy, so the current ordinance talks about eleven to a hundred and fifty units. The fee and lieu is only a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty-one units and above goes up to a hundred and fifty. It just, and it, and it has nothing to do with size and there is, and because it's not in the zoning code or anything, the only allowance for a developer, um the only leeway we're giving a developer to include the units onsite is some, uh there's a little bit of parking relief. That is not, that is not an incentive. That is an invitation for us to be collecting fees. And every good inclusionary, and, and, and John, and Mr. Lauderby used the phrase, inclusionary zoning. We don't have an inclusionary zoning ordinance. Um I would like to see us, rather than sort of adding to this current ordinance, take a whole fresh look at the whole thing. And um, and I would say, you know, we, we contract with, with attorney um Steve Elrod. He worked on what I see as the prototype ordinance in Northbrook. It includes a community land trust, it includes a housing trust fund, includes ways to fund the, the fund. And, you know, I, I think there's much more that needs to be done than just adding these two pieces. It also has, you know, the, the governance pieces in it. So um, so that, I, I, I really, really think that amending this ordinance is not the way to go. It needs to be completely reviewed.
Thank you. John?
Thank you for those comments. I think, you know, where we are today is the result of years of work. And so um, you know, if And so, you know, if there is a direction provided by the board to take what we have and to change it and then to build on it with what we're talking about tonight, that is gonna take some time. And so it's, tonight, we're building on the framework that we have. But if we want to take a different direction and somewhat start over, I just want to be sure that that's the consensus of the board and to acknowledge that that will take some time.
I just don't want us to get lost, you know, what's that saying, can't see the forest.
Forests are the trees. And I'd like to thank staff for their work. This is not easy. This is not an easy topic. And you're straddling two boards, you know? There was the initial board that passed it, and now there's a different board. And we do have representation from that board. So there's a divergence of opinion. I don't think we're that far apart. What I'm gonna do is, again, our discussion tonight is closed. What I'd like to do, I saw a hand up, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board about this issue. And then I think I'm gonna go ahead and call the question, and we'll see where it lands. Knowing that we can make changes later. We can, especially in light of what we're hearing from the strategic plan, the interest in housing in general. We, as a board, can do a lot of creative things. Trustee Robinson mentioned possible housing commission. I think there's a lot of, this can be a springboard to a lot of other exciting work that needs to be considered and done. Please.
If you want to, you can start the clock, but I promise you won't need it.
It's okay.
Because I know a lot of things, but I don't know a ton about this. But I do want to reiterate, I have been very interested in having a standalone housing subcommittee. So I hope that that is not a pipe dream. I am with you, Trustee Robinson. It's been a long time. I don't think that it should be a subcommittee. I think that the presentation showed enough that it is important enough to have people who are specifically interested in this issue specifically, rather than pulling people who might be strapped. And I haven't pulled attendance lately, but the last time I did, it was dismal. And these people are serving on two commissions. But the other thing I really wanted to say is, I don't understand affordable housing all that much. I'm not an expert in this, and I do go down rabbit holes. And I read a really good article that talked about, what are your goals with fee and lieu? Are your goals to collect money, then you make it lower? Are your goals to create housing, then you make it higher? And our fee and lieu, 450,000, I'll be back now, I'm gonna have to keep coming to board meetings. Because 450,000 instead of four affordable housing units, math is my least favorite subject, but we're the losers again.
Thank you. Would you be kind enough, do you have a link?
I'll try to find it.
Oh, thank you.
Because it's a rabbit hole and A M A D D, but I'll try.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sir?
Thank you. David Dalker, representing 9330 Laurel. Thank you for leaving this on the screen. I think it's important to look at these villages that are here. They're all extremely affluent villages that don't have demographics that match Skokie at all whatsoever. And this conversation at a time where people with diseases can't get taken to the right hospital, when residents that have lived here for 60 years have seen speeding cars on their streets that don't get police response when we call, when we have these other serious issues, and we have all those open issues I have in my June 3 letter, this conversation, which quite frankly resembles communism in many ways, is completely inappropriate. And we need to focus on the basics. Garbage collection, rats, schools that need buses for their children, and other things that are affecting the quality of life. I don't understand why, in what world, that talking about a fictional resident that doesn't exist is more important than a resident that's lived here for 60 years? I don't, I just don't understand that. It's not logical. It makes no sense to any person that values people that actually live here. Your website says you respect people that live here. I don't see it. You're respecting these fictional residents that don't exist. I don't get it. Maybe there's something I'm missing. Maybe I'm crazy. But the reality is, this is not, you know, what people voted for. People voted for better government, better quality of life. And this, this is not the highest, this is not in the top 50 items on our list. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Cardassus. I'm a business owner and resident in the Oakton Park neighborhood. I want to discuss with you tonight the blight in that community. It's existed for some time now, and I believe I can present a solution to you all to address it head-on. The tip that is currently in place there extends only to Skokie Boulevard. It should be extended beyond there, to the rest of Oakton Street. That is the model that you need to implement, as was done in the rest of downtown Skokie. That's what will bring development to Skokie Boulevard, which has seen blight, stagnation, and empty storefronts. So as I pose this to you, trustees, clerk, corporation counsel, mayor, managers, I want you to consider this and ask me some questions. I want to stimulate tonight some discussion to get this ball rolling because it's at a standstill and it's unacceptable. What say you? We have a minute and a half to discuss this.
This is a time where we listen, we don't engage. We do appreciate your comments. If you have further ideas, Mr. Cardassus, please put them in writing. Send them to our village manager. He will get them to us.
I've received that response before, and it hasn't been satisfactory.
There are new, there are new people at this dais that were not here before. So I would, I would ask you again.
So what is reasonable in the minute that's remaining to expect in the future about addressing this matter? What should this be, a letter to, did you say the manager?
Yeah, if you, yes, if you could give your contact information to our deputy village clerk, Sylvia Luke, she'll pass it along to the village manager. He'll initiate, he or our deputy village manager will initiate that conversation, and we'll take it from there. So thank you.
This lady here?
Yes, if you would give her your.
Okay, I'll see here.
Thank you, Mr. Cardassus. Is there anyone else who would like to address the village board about this issue? About this issue? Okay, if not, we have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
Aye.
Trustee Shaktar?
No. Okay, thank you. The motion passes. And this item will be back for second read at the next board meeting with some changes based on what was discussed tonight. Yes, thank you.
Yes, that is correct. So the next item is the Skokie Solar Presentation. Alex Franz, the assistant to the village manager, is gonna provide an overview of the Skokie Community Solar Program.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As John mentioned, tonight I'll be talking community solar in Skokie. What it is, how it works, and what programs are available here in the, here in the village. So what is community solar? Community solar allows electricity customers to enjoy the benefits of solar energy without installing solar panels on their homes and businesses. For community solar, a home is any residential electric account. That'd be a single-family home, an apartment condo, so and so forth. A small business is a little harder to define. It's based on electric usage. But how I have always been told is, if you think of the size of a Wendy's, think of that and smaller, that typically is eligible. But if any small business is interested, I would encourage them to apply to see if, to see if they are indeed eligible. So what customers do is they subscribe to an off-site community solar project and purchase a portion of their electricity from that project at a discount, and in return, receive credits on their electric bill. So how does this work? I understand it might be a little confusing. On the next slide, I have a visual that I think really helps summarize it. But how it works is, community solar projects are developed at off-site locations by private developers to generate clean, carbon-free electricity. Electricity from the project is then delivered into the electricity grid of the utility, in our case, ComEd, to power homes, businesses, schools. It's fed directly, directly into the grid. Skokie residents or small businesses can then subscribe to a community solar project and return receiving solar credits or net metering credits on their monthly ComEd bill for their portion of the community solar generated. So how it works is you sign up for a community solar project and you're allocated a percentage of that product, a percentage of a solar project. And that percentage that you're allocated is based on how much electricity you use, typically within the last year or a couple of months. In this instance, let's say maybe you're allocated one solar panel. What that one solar panel generates each month is the value of solar credits that you receive on your ComEd bill. The solar, community solar project will then set a separate bill at a percentage typically about between 80 and 90% of the credit value, and the subscriber keeps the remaining in savings. Before I go over to the visual, I would note that subscribers continue to receive electricity from ComEd and should work with ComEd in the event of any issues or outages. So here's that visual. Let's say for the month, your electricity costs $200. From your solar percentage, the solar project that you're subscribed to, you generate $100 worth of solar credits. You pay ComEd for that month $100. The community solar project will then bill you for that $100 of credits, but at your agreed-upon discount. This discount is, when you sign the contract, the discount that you receive, in this case, 15%, you owe that community solar project $85. If you look at those together, without community solar, you would have owed $200. Instead, you owed ComEd $100, and the community solar project $85, totaling $185, saving you 15 for that month. So what are the projects in Skokie? We have two. One is MC Squared, and the other is Next Am. The MC Squared program was started in 2020, and they offer a minimum 10% discount on solar, community solar credits. And I say a minimum because subscribers who subscribe maybe early on in the program or even maybe a little more recently, got a 20% discount. So at a minimum, subscribers to MC Squared receive a 10% discount. I would encourage anyone looking to subscribe to community solar to at least look at MC Squared. Maybe that 20% discount's still available, but at a bare minimum, it'll be 10%. There's no signup cost, and you can terminate at any time without penalty. Next Am is the newest of the programs. That was started this year, about a month ago. They offer a 15% discount. And again, there's no signup cost, and you can terminate at any time with no penalty. And on the screen there are both of their links. You can also, for more information, visit www-skokie.org/solar. That is all of our solar information, including community solar. And you can, or you can also attend a learning session at October 29th at 5:30 at the Skokie Public Library. We had one last Monday during the day with about 30 attendees. I would also note before I wrap up here, before questions, that MC Squared, that name or logo looks familiar. They're also administer our electric aggregation program that's completely separate from community solar. And, but it is worth noting that they are within the community and have another program. Someone who is in electric aggregation can also be a part of community solar. And so I would, I would wrap it up there and open it up to any, any questions.
So before we open it up, sorry, Lissa, I do, I think it's worth saying, these groups will never come door-to-door soliciting.
That's a great point. Next Am or MC Squared will never cold-call, nor will they come door-to-door.
They won't phone call, they won't come to the door, they won't try to sign up. And we do, from time to time, have spates of those incidents where groups start going door-to-door, and it can be very confusing for the community, and it's always buyer beware. We've heard from way too many residents over the years who have been, you know, really brought into unfavorable contracts that they had difficulty getting out of. So buyer beware. Again, these are legitimate programs. They're administered through the village. They will not go door-to-door otherwise directly solicit.
That's correct.
So, Trustee Levy?
I'm so glad that we can talk about this. It's like been on the tip of my mind for several weeks now. First thing I want to say is yay. It seems like a win-win-win-win-win-win-win. And for us in suburban Skokie, it is. What I want to make everyone aware of is that we have a real tension between rural communities and suburban and urban communities. And one of the places where this plays out is through solar farms. Because the idea is that we get everything we want. We get solar, we don't have it in our backyard, and we get a discount, and it's awesome. And it is, it's awesome for us. But what happens in these rural communities, and I've heard directly from them, is that these projects come in and they're left holding the bag, but they're not first in line for the clean energy that they're, that's being produced on the backs of their communities. So I would really encourage us as a community, it's not a, I think we absolutely should be going forward, and we should definitely, as residents, be doing this. It's a very important, sustainable piece. But I think we also need to be really cognizant of the impact we're having on fellow Illinois communities. And if we can reduce the impact that we're having, we can continue to bridge these ideological gaps between, you know, what our benefits are and what the impacts are elsewhere. Because we're just not, we're just not, we're not seeing that. I wouldn't have seen it if I hadn't directly had a conversation. So it's just a point that I want to make, that I want to make everybody aware of, that as good neighbors, we should also be thinking about where these solar farms are existing and how we can support those communities. And that may be in terms of, can we provide, can we provide things like advice on how to be looking at these contracts to make sure that these communities are being supported? I would think that a community of 500 people that has a solar farm should never be paying for electricity.
That's something that Illinois Municipal League or another larger group could address or bring up, or some state legislator. So thank you for that point, Trustee Levy. Any other questions for Alex from the board? Okay, Alex, thank you. And thanks to Trustee Robinson for suggesting this in the first place. And really appreciate your efforts to have those sessions at the library. And I'm really thrilled to know that even during the middle of the day, 30 people came to attend. So I'm guessing the turnout in next week might be higher. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Good job.
Item C was approved as part of tonight's consent agenda, and that completes my report.
Thank you, John. So the next item on the agenda is the report of our corporation counsel, Barbara Mangler.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. Item A, and the only item on my agenda tonight, is an ordinance that will amend Chapter 2, Article 7 of the Skokie Village Code by increasing the number of members on the Appearance Commission from seven to nine. Additionally, the Telecommunications Advisory Committee will be renamed to the, let me get this, this is tongue-twister, to the Technology Advancement and Transformation Commission. The number of members on this commission will also be increased from 10 to 13. The name change to Technology Advancement and Transmission Commission is to acknowledge and advance, is to acknowledge that advances in technology are transformative. And this was on the recommendation by the mayor. This is up for first reading tonight, and we'll be back for second reading and adoption on November 3rd.
Yes. So I would appreciate, is there a motion to approve, first of all?
So this is first reading. It will come back on second.
So it'll come back, but we still need a motion.
No.
No, we don't. Okay, so this is on first read, so it's not an action item tonight?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll start off the discussion, just to thank you all for your consideration on this. I'll tell you how it came about. Earlier this summer, I met with the chairperson of the Stat Commission, Scott Shamberg. He's done a great job over the last three or four years with that commission. And he said that they wanted a name change because they felt that the existing name, they liked the STAT acronym, but that it didn't really, the extrapolation of the acronym didn't really accurately reflect their work and the ongoing. didn't really accurately reflect their work and the, the ongoing focus. So my suggestion to him was come up with an idea. So they did, and this was what they came up with. But during that conversation, I asked him, because we have such an influx of residents who want to get involved and want to serve on boards and commissions now, if that commission was low, they had, they currently have only ten members. And I asked him about the possibility of expanding to add some more, and we, we both agreed that three was a good number. So that's where that came from. Also, in looking at our land use commissions, the zoning board of appeals and the plan commission, both have nine seats. Appearance only has seven. And again, we have many, many individuals who are applying to serve on the land use commissions. So I think even just adding those two more seats, there are going to be some other changes coming up to those commissions in terms of people cycling off. So I think this is a, a good start to add those two seats. Again, I would appreciate your consideration. I think this will just help more people serve and kind of right-size the name at the request of the Stat Commission. Any comments or questions? Keith, trustee Robinson?
I think it's a great idea. The only question I have, now that we have four districts awards, is there a consideration to be, you know, just targeted and mindful of the representation on those commissions? And would it, would it, I don't know, make sense to have like a number that might be an even number where you got maybe two per, or whatever? It was just a, just a thought.
So, no, I like, I'm glad you brought that up. I don't know that that's going to be feasible with our existing commissions. But as we look going forward, you know, we've talked about, you know, there's two or three that we're all thinking about. I have some other ideas as well. So in coming months, likely first quarter of two thousand twenty-six, when we start really looking at those possibilities, that's when I would like to talk about those, looking at the representation a little bit differently going forward. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. Other comments, questions? All right, thank you all for your consideration on that. More to come at our November third meeting.
And that completes my report.
Thank you, Barb. Next item on our agenda is Plan Commission Case two thousand twenty-five-ten P.
What about the new business?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Skipped right by that. New business. Is there new business to come before the board? Trustee Robinson, and then we'll go to this side.
Actually, I did prepare something to read tonight.
Great.
If that's okay.
Sure.
All right, cool. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to begin by saying how deeply troubling it was to hear about the incident that occurred on October seventh in Shawnee Park. The fact that a group of young people targeted their peers with anti-Semitic language and violence is completely unacceptable. And I hope as a community and especially as adults, we must recognize that this kind of behavior is learned and it must stop. As an educator, I know that children and young adults model what they see and hear. They engage in bias or hate. It reflects the messages that they receive from their homes and in the world around them. We all have the responsibility to do better, discriminating against our neighbors based on our identity, has a painful history in this country and in our community. We cannot and we should not allow those patterns to repeat. Skokie continues to stand as a national leader in inclusion, accountability, and justice. We heard a little bit about that today. And with the support of the previous board, specifically Kim Kuhn, and the percever, and the procedures that were drafted by former village attorney Michael Lorge, we had procedures for early identification and intervention in initial hate incidents, precise moments for something like this, which allows us to identify, report, and respond to hate incidents early before they go to hate crimes. And I just want members of the community to know that. You can report all concerns. With that said, this particular incident that was talked about today, it remains under investigation as far as I know. I want to thank our police department and their continued efforts for their support of creating a community that's keeping us all safe. This initiative and our response to moments like this reflects the partnership with the village leadership, the PD, Health and Human Services, the Human Relations Commission, and many other organizations. Together, we remain committed to protect the rights and dignity and safety of every resident, regardless of race, religion, gender, identity, or background. Almost done. At the same time, we must acknowledge that our community continues to be challenged and at times torn apart by acts of divisiveness and systems and structures that reinforce this separation. So my heart goes out to all the families, including those close to home on their sacrifice and their quest to keep their family whole. In these moments, we must recommit ourselves to shared humanity and choose compassion over conflict. But these systems and procedures only go so far for real change happens through people. So we, as a community, must choose the hard work of understanding one another and our shared humanity. We must lift each other up, especially in these trying times, and refuse to get caught up in the divisiveness that tears communities apart. So Skokie will continue to lead with compassion, education, and accountability because it's who we are and how we move.
Thank you, trustee Robinson. So well said. I'd like to share, or I do share, or I have gratitude for the work of the former board, trustee Kuhn, for our former village attorney, Michael Lorge. It was great work, you, that you laid a wonderful groundwork. Just a point of clarity, the investigation, I believe, has come to an end in that, and the police are still working to bring it to a, a resolution. But we will be taking a look at activating what was laid out in that ordinance to get our Human Relations Commission involved going forward in short order. So the village manager and I will be talking about that. So thank you. Thank you again for your heartfelt comments. Trustee Schechter.
Yeah, I appreciate Mayor Tennis, trustee Robinson for explicitly talking about the incident that was, and as somebody said, it's not just an incident, it was an act of anti-Semitism needs to be called out. And any act of hate needs to be, it needs to be named very clearly and addressed very swiftly and by, by the whole community. So, so thank you. I wanted to address the, the comments, and they're related, related to ICE and concerns about people in our communities being kidnapped. I, I'm very moved by the comments made and by, by the letters that we received. And I have to say, there are solutions. And I was looking at the City of Evanston's ordinance. They passed a resolution, they call prohibiting the use of City of Evanston property for federal civil immigration enforcement operations and providing direction and implementation of the welcoming city ordinance. So they passed a resolution prohibiting the use of their property, you know, as a staging area to post, you know, directing staff to identify city-owned properties that could be used as enforcement on post-signage, clearly identifying these properties, using physical barriers as necessary to lock gates, to limit access to properties, directing their departments to implement procedures, requiring staff to notify their supervisors if they become aware that federal agents are using city-owned properties for immigration enforcement purposes, and requiring supervisors to notify their city manager, and directing staff to design and print signage that private property owners or renters may use to delineate non-public areas of their property in which activities related to civil immigration enforcement are restricted. So if, if I may, I would like to make a motion that we, we can't.
The Village of Skokie.
You know, Gail, I'm so sorry, we can't because we, it wasn't noticed. So Barb, jump in. But it's, so that's why we're going to discuss it on November third.
So again, for the, for the discussion, it's noticed up on November third. That way, everybody in the community knows it's going to be on the board and there will be a discussion then. And if the board so directs, either the village manager or myself to take some action, it's at a properly noticed date.
Could we have a draft at least of, of a, for discuss, just like you had a draft for first reading on the commissions?
I'm going to defer to John. I think that's an excellent idea. I want to just, you know, we're, John? A starting point.
Yes, there, there can be a starting point. The, yeah, the, Mike Charlie has been heavily involved in monitoring what the other towns and the counties have done. And so there can be, there, there will be a staff report presented to the board.
Yeah. I, I.
So you're saying that you would, you would do some kind of a draft for, for comments?
We'll talk that through, right. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, next item on the agenda, Mr. Luke and Community Development Director Johanna Niden. Next item is our Plan Commission Case two thousand twenty-five-ten P, street vacation of Foster Street between ninety-four fifty-six and ninety-five hundred Crawford Avenue. Chairperson, Plan Commission Chairperson, Paul Luke.
Good evening, mayor members of the board. At the December eighteenth meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed a request from Andrea Wells, Amidica and Rodica, and Marina to locate, to vacate part of Foster Avenue Street, north of ninety-four fifty-six Crawford Avenue, also south on, of ninety-five hundred Crawford Avenue in an R-one single-family zoning district. The vacation of the public street includes the following. The conveyance of south portion, twelve and a half feet of the subject site to Andrea Wells, the owner of the property at ninety-four fifty-six Crawford Avenue, who intends to incorporate the land in her current undeveloped property. Also, the, the conveyance of the northern twenty and a half feet of the alley to Amidica and Rodica and Marina, the owners of ninety-five hundred Crawford Avenue, who intends to establish ownership of the land they are currently using as a driveway and parking area for the residents. The establishment of an easement for public utilities and drainage within the portion of the subject site lying west of the line between, which is drawn a hundred and fifty-six feet west, west of and parallel to the east line of the northwest one-quarter section of, section fifteen dash forty-one dash thirteen. Staff and commission approves the request. Commission's voting, this is of eight ayes and one member absent.
Thank you. So is there a motion to concur with Plan Commission two thousand twenty-five-ten P, street vacation Foster Street between ninety-four fifty-six and ninety-five hundred Crawford Avenue? A motion is in order?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Robinson. Is there a second? Trustee Kamani Levy, thank you. Discussion? Questions? Okay. Any comments from the public? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kamani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slovan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, chairman. Last item on the agenda is public comments. Again, we will allocate up to thirty minutes. Speakers are allocated three minutes. Is there anyone who has not addressed the board who would like to speak this evening?
Sleepy now. It's good to see you, mayor, board members. It's Semron here again. I'm starting to lose faith in whether Village of Skokie truly cares about its residents because so far, every appeal for basic fairness, decency has been met with silence at your doorstep. For over a year, I've come here respectfully asking for help, yet nothing has changed. The Village of Skokie still has taken no access to restore our access, ensure safety, and offer a real solution. What was clearly a mistake by both the village and the landlord has now caused lasting hardship for my family and danger to the daycare children. There is no, this is no longer negligence, it's willful disregard. The village knows the playground blocking our driveway was built without permits and inspections. IDA had never approved closing our state route access. Children are being exposed to toxic exhaust fumes from the garage, yet the village continues to defend what everyone can clearly see is wrong. Because of this obstruction, my mail packages, deliveries end up in the middle of the street. Neighbors get them. We don't get them sometimes. We have faced retaliation, intimidation, threats, gangsters showing up to our house, even breaking, landlord trying to break into our house. I will not submit to terrorism. We've also been dragged into frivolous litigation simply because we complained to the Village of Skokie for valid concerns. We've lost a lot of money, peace of mind, affected our health, all for something we did not create. We've been forced to protect, I have been forced to protect my family for this village's mistake and ongoing inaction. At this point, the village has been placed on record notice for multiple violations, federal, state, and local. Continuing to ignore these formal notices only strengthens claims for willful wanton misconduct and denial of equal protection under the law. It is deeply troubling that months after subpoenaed records, the village still hasn't produced all of them, even the opposing council received theirs immediately. To make matters worse, the village appears to be in regular communication with opposing council, withholding those same documents from me. This raises serious concerns about fairness, transparency, transparency, and who the village is really protecting. But this is just not about me. It's about whether our local government listens to its residents. Something is clearly wrong. Nobody in this room would tolerate their home access being blocked, neighbors getting their packages. They have to block, walk around the whole block to get basic access to in their home. I'm trying to remain hopeful that reason and fairness will prevail. I still believe in this community and in the responsibility of the elected to serve it. Mayor Tennis, board members, please act with integrity. Please don't make me force.
Mr. Sha, I'm so sorry. You know, we, we keep our three minutes tight. Thank you.
Next month is Veterans Day. My father is a veteran. The Village of Skokie currently has two veterans memorials. One is a Vietnam War memorial, one is a memorial for a specific person, Sergeant Foyak, who also served during the Vietnam War. So that means that the Village of Skokie doesn't have any veterans memorials for World War One, World War Two, the Korean War, which my dad served in, or any of the other wars that followed that, which is a list sadly too long to list. Many communities in, in Illinois have veterans memorials that have the names of every resident on those memorials. Why doesn't Skokie have something like that? Does it not care about its residents that have served in the army for their freedoms? I don't know. But it's a question worth asking. I ask that people consider how we could change that going forward. Next, I'd like to, to point out that the coffee with the board and the mayor of Elk Grove is again occurring on the first of November. For the third time in a row, Mr. Iverson has come up with an excuse not to attend after originally agreeing to attend. He said he was going to ask other trustees to attend. By a show of hands, is anybody else willing to come to this meeting to show how a board can interact with its residents in a productive manner to create a civilized society where things get done about the issues that residents care about instead of pet agendas? Anybody raising their hand? I encourage you to continue to talk to Mr. Iverson. You've got two more weeks. Lastly, I'd like to welcome our new gentleman in the front row there with the water thing. I'm sorry to hear about your crisis, sir. On February sixteenth of this year, after that water crisis, I held up a sign in front of Sketchbook. And instead of allowing my First Amendment rights to be appreciated and justified, Mr. Nicholas Wyatt, who's still, for some reason, employed by this village, came and held a larger sign in front of my sign, violating my First Amendment rights, and then instructed the police to harass me. The police have been harassing me ever. The police have been harassing me every single day since then. I've been denying my family basic services, including my mother's dementia issues and other issues. I don't understand why this is there. When we elected you mayor, we elected you to hire new staff to change the direction of this village, and I, it's time for these trustees and you to come together and make that happen. And I appreciate the gentleman nodding. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
I could say it from here, but you don't like that.
Well, the the video doesn't like it. We want to hear you. We want everyone to hear you.
You do want to hear this one.
We do, and everyone wants to hear it.
I worked on campaigns during election season, and I got to say, nobody I spoke with said that they wanted you to replace the employees. People were very concerned about a change in the board could mean a change in the employees. I do believe that overall, Skokie is pretty happy with our village employees, and I felt like that needed to be said.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I think I see someone racing towards the podium. There you go.
Elanka Ulrich, resident of Skokie, United States citizen. I stepped down because my son just texted me because it's so late, I lost focus, and so I was taking quick notes, and I didn't press send, so it all went away. But I don't think I really need notes. Thank you, Keith, for saying that hate does not belong here. Admittedly, I didn't know about what happened, I'll look it up. But I'm here to address what happened about the ICE issue. Masked thugs zipped tied children. They touched children. I was a helicopter mom, and as mom, if somebody started my children wearing masks, my IDs, camouflage, looked like thugs, took them away from me and zipped tied, I'm alone with them? Are you kidding me? Wow. So I don't know what kind of person does that, but what I do know is I don't live anywhere near here. As a citizen, I'm looking, what we're standing, unprofessional and not trained, and as a lawyer, I see unconstitutional behavior. I just, I am forever against it. I don't know how to make our neighbors feel safe. We need signs, we need, I don't know what we can do, but we need to talk about it next time, what we can do to make us safer. I can't imagine my kids next door, Indian family next door, those kids being zipped tied. And I can't imagine that you can imagine your children being zipped tied as well. And that can't, we can't, as Americans, let that happen. Sorry, I'm emotional, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else who wishes to address the board? Good discussions this evening. This is hard work. Thank you, everyone. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by trustee Pierce Slovan, second by trustee Lissa Levy. Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Kamani Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Slovan?
Aye.